Mayor Salsi, members of council and ladies and gentlemen. We are here on a very good mission tonight. As you recall, I hope you remember back in March, we were here to announce that we were going into the Communities in Bloom competition, provincial competition for the first time. And we're laying out plans, we mentioned what we were going to be doing, and tonight we're just going to review a little bit what we have done. We had two judges come in in July, and we're just going to tell you what we accomplished along the way. We're here to recap the events.
The Communities in Bloom program allowed our city, and that's all of us, to profile and focus on our people, our efforts over the year, our programs and our projects, confirming what we already know, and that is that Niagara Falls is a destination worth celebrating and sharing. And we're just getting started. During their two-day stay, the judges evaluated our community in eight criteria: floral display, landscape areas, tidiness, tree and urban forestry, environmental awareness, natural and cultural heritage conservation, turf and ground cover, and community involvement.
Before we go any further, would be, I'd like to ask my committee to stand. We're all in red here today. They came all the way out to support us, so I just wanted to not forget to do that. Now, we would like to show you a few slides of our activities with the judges. Here we are at the Hilton Hotel lobby. This is the greeting group. The two judges are Dennis Flanagan and Lee Rosen from the Communities in Bloom. And the Hilton was one of our sponsors in this program. So we're a happy group. Here is the Niagara Parks Commission School of Horticulture Grounds. We have a student explaining to the judges about the grounds and their program on-site. And this, of course, is the Oaks Theater Park. Debbie Whitehouse is explaining to the judges about their grounds there and what it means. There's a lot of history in that property. And this is at the Ed Waters Tap and Grill, another sponsor, sorry about that. And yes, we had a nice dinner, and the School of Horticulture sent most of the vegetables for that meal right from the school, so they, the chef used them all. It was quite impressive. Slow food. And here, we're at the McBain Center, and we've got Jeff Clayton explaining all the work he has done. And we have Russell Bowles in the background there, too, viewing. And Denise Morrissey there. So we're educating them all on that ground, and they were really quite impressed with our McBain Center. And this is the Millennium Trail. And we took them down there. We have Lisa Wilson on there. She's from the Trail and Bike Way Committee for Niagara Falls. And that's Dennis Flanagan. Down in the corner is some staff talking about the Millennium Trail. And we have also some of our Communities in Bloom people there. But that was a great trip. Here is the downtown. We hit the downtown revitalization program. We told them all about that. And on the front, we have Tony Williams, Mark Richardson, and at the back, we've got Russell Bowles, Don Weaver, Mr. Diagdadi, and Mr. Peter Angelo. Good-looking group. As a matter of fact, we caused a big stir downtown because we were all in red and everybody wondering what was going on. So it was fun. So here we are, looking at the downtown also, and checking out all the new storefronts, the new businesses, and of course, the flowers and the plants for that area. Now, this is the St. Paul's High School. They were the winners of the Schools in Bloom program, so they hosted the judges on a tour of their property. And this is at the Project Share Community Garden. And we had an extensive tour there, and they had people there explaining all about their own plots and what they do with Project Share. Really good venue there. And this was taken at the meet and greet evening when we had the, at Eagle Valley Golf Club. And this is, we were waiting for the helicopter to come in. The helicopter was also a sponsor, and so was Eagle Valley. Most of this was all sponsored and partnered. So it was a great venue, and we watched the helicopter come in with the judges on it. There it is. And they sprayed it, so it went right through the water and sprayed everybody on that roof. And this is also at the meet and greet. We had a cake there that was decorated for Communities in Bloom. And there's the official cutting. And down on the left-hand side, it was quite a filled room. We had a good show. And they were all sponsors, partners, volunteers, and anyone interested in that program. Of course, we have Derek Tadde on the right side, my favorite guy, starting all events. And I would like to mention my committee, Communities in Bloom Committee. We have Paisley, of course, Fran Berry, Arlie DeJulie, Janet Hassel, Jean Whedon, Donna Murray, Eloise Schumacher, Elizabeth Manker, Joe Lowell, and Bruce Hoben. Great committee. And also our task force. We have Kathy Powell, Susan Noakes, Ruthanne Newsting, Joyce Morocco, Don Weaver, Paul Bonkers, Fran Berry, Michelle Taylor, Heidi Werner, Tina Myers, Tina Antonio, Russell Bowles, and Carolyn Bones. So all these people got together and did this work, and it was really good. These are our sponsors. I'm not naming them. You can read them. Thank you, sponsors. And I would like to have a special thanks to Mark Richardson, our community development coordinator, extraordinaire, because without his diligence, I'm not going to brag, he was good. He was darn good. And I know we wouldn't have got as far as we did without him. And the mayor and council, thank you for your continued support throughout this program. As you can see from the pictures, they were there. So we like that. Okay. The information gathered and presented to the judges is available for you to see in our community profile book, which is at City Hall, at the McBain Center, and at Parks Rec and Culture Department. Okay, so let's get down to the nitty-gritty. I am very proud to announce that Niagara Falls, in the first year of Communities in Bloom provincial competition, received a Five Bloom Award, which is the highest award. And it's for the first year. I'll present that to you in just a moment.
Thank you.
Okay. We also got a second award, which is for landscape areas. They were very impressed with the McBain Center and also the School of Horticulture Properties, the Niagara Parks, yeah, of course, and but a lot that we're doing is very impressive. So it gives me pleasure. Oh, the community is hoping to continue this program next year, and we hope with council support and our community support that we can once again blossom, bloom, and grow. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, I wanted to extend council's appreciation on behalf of all the members here and staff for the unwavering dedication and commitment that this committee and all of our residents and businesses showed toward the competition. As we heard this year, this wasn't a competition as much as it is a journey. And we were fortunate to receive the Five Bloom Award provincially. We hope to go on to the Nationals and then certainly even beyond that to the International. The judges wanted to reassure us that we're well on our way, and in a few years, they felt we could certainly compete on a much higher level. So this goes, I accept this on behalf of the members of council. We hope that we can display this in an appropriate place. Our staff have been exceptional in their commitment as well, but I want to thank council for their commitment to making our city a better place and to all the residents who did their share. The city never looked as good as it has this past summer, and congratulations to everyone. We certainly deserved this. So thank you.
The next deputation is from Carol Stewart Kirkby, the executive director of the United Way, who's going to update us on the agency's activities and this year's campaign. I'll call forward Carol Stewart Kirkby.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Well, it seems like a good segue to go from the Communities in Bloom, where making Niagara Falls a better community, to the United Way, where we too are trying to make Niagara Falls a better community. So that's a perfect segue. So thank you, whoever placed me after them. Excellent work. Good evening, Mayor Salsi, councilors and citizens, as many of you here tonight. My name is Carol Stewart Kirkby. I'm the executive director of the United Way of Niagara Falls and Greater Fort Erie. And first, allow me to thank you for providing a few minutes this evening to give you an update on our United Way. I haven't made a formal presentation to this council since we amalgamated two United Ways into one in 2007, and quite a bit has happened since then. And before I go any further, I would like to thank the City of Niagara Falls staff for their ongoing support of our campaign. Under the leadership of Ken Todd and a committee of volunteers, I sense a renewed enthusiasm this year, and we really look forward to some excellent results in November. For those of you who may not be familiar, the United Way is a community-based organization that raises funds every fall to distribute to agencies who provide service to people in our community. We are hoping to raise a million dollars this fall to fund programs here in Niagara Falls and $200,000 in Fort Erie. In December 2008, our Board of Directors endorsed a three-year strategic plan for our new United Way. Our new vision statement is to connect, leverage, and encourage relationships to build a better community. In many ways, we work to bring the right people together to create opportunities and solutions. Although fundraising is what people primarily recognize us for, the United Way's role in the community is more than that. During the strategic planning exercise, we received lots of feedback from Niagara Falls folks who had ideas about where the United Way's efforts should be focused. As a result, a team of volunteers drafted two new priorities to help direct our resources. They are: Our number-one funding priority, then, is ensuring basic needs for all. People who have access to safe, affordable shelter, a reliable, healthy food source, basic literacy and education, and purposeful, gainful employment are well-equipped to lead productive, happy, and healthy lives. Our second funding priority is providing secondary supports for targeted groups. From time to time, populations in our community need additional help to address issues and overcome barriers, preventing them from leading productive, happy, and healthy lives. These groups are people living with a disability, children and youth at risk, and senior citizens. Given these new focused priorities, I'm sure it comes as no surprise that the United Way got involved in the development of affordable housing on Kayla Road, which is expected to be completed in early 2010, and thank you for your support in that project. As well, we are pleased to work with other like-minded citizens on the mayor's homelessness task force, looking to maximize available resources to bring improved housing opportunities to Niagara Falls people. Also in the area of housing, our United Way is a member of the region's Homelessness Advisory Committee, and we have served on the community advisory board to determine where homelessness funding from the federal and provincial governments would be best spent in Niagara. This concentrated effort on housing is a reflection of ensuring basic needs for all. We strongly believe that if everyone has access to safe, affordable housing, they are better equipped to tackle some of the other problems life throws their way. I personally have been involved in the United Way for over 20 years. The organization has held my attention as a volunteer and as a staff person for a few very important reasons. Number one, each United Way is autonomous. Local people make decisions about the direction of our United Way. We are not governed by a head office in Ottawa or Toronto. Number two, money raised in our community stays in our community. Number three, the United Way is efficient. There are over 88,000 registered charities in Canada. What sets the United Way apart is its ability to keep administration and cost of fundraising low, so that more of the donors' dollars go where they are needed to help in the community. And the fourth reason, one in three people access United Way-funded programs. This is the hardest fact for people to grasp. If there are 100 people in this room, possibly right now, that means that 35 people or so will use a United Way-funded program. If you're healthy, if you're employed, if you're well-fed and comfortably housed, it's really hard to imagine that you may need the services of a United Way-funded agency. So there's a knock at the door one day, and you go to the door, and there's a police officer at the door and a couple of plainclothes folks. The police officer has come to deliver some bad news. Mrs. Kirkby, I'm sorry to tell you that your son was fatally injured in a car accident last night. Emergency services personnel have delivered the news, have done their job. The two plainclothes people are volunteers with Niagara Victim Crisis Support Service who stay. They will boil the kettle, they will call your priest, they will comfort you in a time of crisis that nobody could ever imagine would happen to them, and we hope it never does. But it's reassuring to know that United Way money goes towards training those volunteers to be in that home at that very, very difficult time. I could go on, but you have a long agenda, and suffice it to say that the United Way of Niagara Falls and Greater Fort Erie funds 35 different agencies delivering close to 60 programs. I'll leave behind some brochures that list all these agencies, as well as provides other pertinent information. Our slogan this year is "Because We Live Here." The United Way is a local charity supported by a local Board of Directors, meeting the needs of local folks. We are dependent upon the generosity of this community to continue to support these agencies and their services. Thank you for welcoming me this evening, and if certainly you ever have any questions, and I'll turn to this statue, if you ever have any questions about the United Way, please don't hesitate to contact us through the office. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. There may be questions. There may be questions from members of council. Members of council, any questions for Mrs. Carol Stewart Kirkby?
Okay.
Having seen none, thank you so much. We wish you good luck, and we're certainly out there to support the campaign once again this year.
It's a poor boy on Thursday.
That's right. We'll make a note of that. Thank you so much. Thank you. Members of council, before I move on, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of our MPP, Mr. Kim Crater, as well. We have regional representation here this evening from our regional reps, Barbara Greenwood and Norm Puddick. So welcome, lady and gentleman. Thank you. At this time, moving on to the next item on the agenda. In response to council's request, I have invited the Chair of the Hamilton Niagara Haldeman LIN, or Local Health Integration Network, to attend. Mrs. Juanita Gladhill and Mrs. Debbie Sevenpiper, President and CEO of the Niagara Health System, to respond to the open letter to the citizens of Niagara presented by Dr. Paul Dobrolouskas at our last council meeting. They are here to clarify for council any issues on the matter of the GNGH Emergency Department. At this time, I'll now entertain a motion to reaffirm council's position to hear from the LIN or NHS representatives only at this council meeting. Counselor?
Yes, Your Worship. I just wanted to, if I could, first off, welcome our friends from NHS for being here today, and appreciate you being here. I'm sure it's not a situation that you look forward to. I know in the past, I know we've had some different views on things, and I just want to reassure the gallery that we're going to, at all times, remain professional and respectful. And our goal here is to get solutions, not to create more problems. And again, we appreciate you coming here, and we want to have an open dialogue so that we can together get to solutions, because I think we all agree that, you know, together we're going to get to our goals much better than fighting each other and opposing each other. And that's our objective here today, is that we can work together to get to some resolution. So, Your Worship, I appreciate, I know it wasn't easy, and I'm sure it may have been a restless sleep for some people, but we do appreciate you being here. And again, we ask everyone for respect that we could get through this and not turn it into anything other than a professional exchange.
Appreciate that. You want to make that motion then, please?
Yeah, well, I would make that motion.
Second to the motion, Counselor Maves. Okay. The motion is to reaffirm council's position to hear from the LIN and NHS representatives only at this council meeting. Counselor, carry on.
Your Worship, am I to assume the format is council-only? Is this a council-only between them and council?
That's right. Council's request.
But there will be no questions by anyone other than councilors?
They're here to respond to the matters brought up in the first meeting, and they'll have their representative here to address that. Okay?
And to extend the ten minutes.
Yeah, to extend the 10-minute limit, that's fine. Okay. Thank you. All right. Call the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Want to oppose, the motion's carried. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call the Chair of the Hamilton Niagara Haldeman Local Health Integration Network, Mrs. Juanita Gladhill, to come forward. Welcome, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'd like to begin, if I can maybe just take a moment. This is actually a first opportunity that I've had, somewhat delayed by, I guess, a year, to thank you, Mayor Salsi, and the members of council for the use of your council chambers just about a year ago, when our board was able to host one of our open public meetings in these chambers. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to extend our thanks to you for that accommodation last October.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
And thank you for the invitation to be here this evening. I'm really here to provide some opening remarks in context in advance of the Niagara Health System's presentation and direct response to some of the concerns that have been brought forward to this council with respect to the changes underway at Greater Niagara General Hospital. Sorry, the climb up the stairs took a little of my breath away, proving that I need to spend more time at the Y and engaged in healthy exercise, like many of us, unfortunately. I wanted to just perhaps provide some context with respect to the relationship between the Local Health Integration Network and the Niagara Health System. Last, right around last March, we actually got to a point that had been a fairly long time in coming in the context of entering into an accountability agreement with the Niagara Health System. The Local Health Integration Network, as one of 14 in the province of Ontario, received the mandate under the Local Health System Integration Act of 2006 and moved into final funding authorities granted in April of 2007 to hold accountability agreements for the planning integration, coordination, and funding of health, local health service provision delivered by local health service providers. One of the unique attributes of the LIN model in Ontario, as many of you are likely aware, is that it works with and respects local governance. And in this case, we would be referring to the Board of the Niagara Health System, which our board entered into an accountability agreement after what was admittedly fairly lengthy and definitely a difficult process for the communities in Niagara over the course of several months, as our board, in its attempts to negotiate an accountability agreement with the Niagara Health System, realized that through repeated reviews of operational programs and services, a review of additional cost-saving measures that could be undertaken by the NHS, that really what was needed was a hospital improvement plan that would address how the Niagara Health System would reorganize its services to ensure the consistent delivery of quality services in a sustainable manner for the citizens of Niagara that it has a mandate to serve. Part of the process of getting to an approved HIP saw community engagement undertaken by the advisor that the LIN board brought in once the NHS delivered its HIP to our board. In fact, in this very chamber, we received Dr. Kitz's recommendations, and then a period of consultation with local communities was undertaken. Once we made our way through the review of the proposed HIP, there were some amendments to it that were proposed by Dr. Kitz. And in November of 2000, and I'm losing my dates here, November of 2008, our board approved the hospital improvement plan with some amendments, and requested that the Niagara Health System, one, begin to immediately work with us to get to the accountability agreement, and, secondly, they would begin planning the implementation of the HIP. The implementation of the hospital improvement plan began in the spring of 2009 and continues at this time. It is a requirement under what our board approved, and it is also a requirement under the accountability agreement that we entered into with them. One of the things that we continue to hear as we met with not only your local elected provincial Member of Parliament, but also with citizen groups, your ad hoc group, and I see members of that group here in the chamber this evening, were some of the concerns that continued around wait times, in particular, at the Greater Niagara General Hospital. I must just stop at this moment because I remember a couple of years ago, actually not that long ago, being present at the opening or the grand reopening of the newly renovated emergency department at Greater Niagara General. And I remember how in awe every one of us in attendance that day was at the state-of-the-art equipment, at the capacity that was being brought to this very important site of the Niagara Health System. So it was certainly disconcerting to our board to continue to hear that wait times continued to be a significant issue, that people trying to access timely emergency services in Niagara Falls were not doing so, quite frankly. And so as part of not only our work with the Niagara Health System, as the hospital improvement plan unfolded, and I know that Ms. Sevenpiper's going to speak more in detail, so I'm not going to go into those details because they have the mandate to operate those services. But one of the things that was identified in our accountability agreement and in the implementation plan of the HIP that our board had the responsibility to approve was how in the reorganization of services, some of these key pressures would be addressed. And one of the requirements was certainly to ensure that there was a standard of practice for emergency services among the sites of the Niagara Health System responsible for delivering those services to local communities and beyond. That has resulted in some changes in the staffing. That has resulted in some changes in the staffing model. I think that all of us that have staff in our organizations, whether it's in our day job or in our public service hats, will recognize that sometimes change is very difficult. However, the healthcare system is there to serve the citizen. There are standards of how emergency departments are staffed. There is an expectation that there will be consistency that is captured in the accountability agreement, which we have the responsibility to have entered into with the Niagara Health System and we have the responsibility for monitoring. And just as I appreciate that you want to hear the concerns of citizens, I think that perhaps you may, and I can't draw that conclusion for you, you would draw it on your own, where there are people that are internal to an organization that have issues with changes, there are processes in those organizations and they also have duly appointed representatives to address their grievances. And that is what is expected within any health service provider. What is important is that the citizen is served, that healthcare is being delivered in a consistent, sustainable manner. It's not enough to have it all here today and sort of here tomorrow. And that is truly what we are all working towards. And so, I would hope that in the presentation that follows, you will find assurance that you seek for your residents here this evening, that more physician coverage, that nurses who are able and ready and willing and capable of performing to their full scope of practice are enabled to do so, and that ultimately that reduced wait times for the residents attending the Greater Niagara Falls General Hospital are far more consistent, in fact, far more improved than they have been in the past. The hospital improvement plan was approved almost a year ago by our board. The accountability agreement was signed several months later and we continue to monitor it. Change is difficult and transition is a process. You don't, as all of us know, that have gone through many changes in our organizations, again, in public service and in our other lives that we all lead, transition is in fact a process that we need to get through. We are encouraged and we have been out in open houses, and my apologies to the citizens of St. Catharines because I left that open house to be here this evening with you. As we move forward, we have been hearing in other communities in Niagara of change being difficult, but also of some of the initiatives that are being undertaken by local leaders, working with the Niagara Health System, working with other health service providers in their community, and with service providers that are outside of the healthcare system. I think that that is the opportunity that exists for every community in Niagara, to look at where and how we best support people in the community because that's where they want to be and that's where people get most of their healthcare, how we ensure appropriate access to acute care services, hospital services, long-term care homes, et cetera, how we work best with partners like EMS. And I would offer that at this time, we're seeing some collaboration and some innovation that I would say perhaps a year ago, as we were making our way through the HIP, many thought impossible. And we're seeing agreements to say, you know, maybe this is possible. And that can happen after change begins. Change has begun. It is for the benefit of the citizen and I would encourage and I would look forward to the opportunity to look at how the community can be further strengthened. Thank you for your time, Mrs. E.
Thank you, Mrs. Gladhill. Members of council, do you have any questions for Mrs. Gladhill this evening? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'd like to call now upon Mrs. Debbie Sevenpiper, the CEO of the NHS.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to explain the changes underway to improve quality of care at the Greater Niagara General site of the Niagara Health System. And I'd like to thank Mr. Diavdotti for his opening comments. Certainly, I believe that we're all here this evening and that our interests are all aligned in terms of improving quality of care for the residents of Niagara Falls and all of Niagara. At your last council meeting, you did hear some concerns regarding the changes that are underway. I believe in your package this evening is the detailed response from the Niagara Health System in relation to those concerns expressed, and I'm not going to read that letter. It was in your package and it is posted on your website. The presentation this evening will be shared between myself, and although the slide says Dr. Maynard Luderman, he's also in the audience, but it's actually Dr. John McCauley to my right, who is the Regional Chief of Emergency Medicine for all of Niagara. And along with me is Dr. Isser Dabinski, who is a well-respected family physician and an expert in the delivery of emergency services across Ontario and Canada. Dr. Dabinski reviewed the operations of the Niagara Falls Emergency Room and his report was the basis for the changes that are currently being implemented at the site. Also here with me this evening, in addition to our speakers, are members of our Board of Trustees, members of the Board of Trustees of the Niagara Falls Foundation, physicians, nurses, leadership of the emergency program across Niagara, and members of our management and senior team. In the short time that we have this evening, we will focus on the mandate for the changes as required by the Ministry of Health and the LIN, and you heard a bit about that from the Board Chair as to the mandate and the mandate of our Board of Trustees. We will look at the data that was reviewed by the Niagara Health System as a basis for concluding the changes that were required. We will also look at the, what is defined as best practice in the delivery of emergency room services, how this best practice is being translated into the changes underway at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room. We will talk a bit about the early indications of success that we're seeing in the changes that are being implemented, and finally, the challenges that remain that will continue to impact the patient flow in the emergency department and what we are doing to address those additional challenges. So, in terms of the mandate for change, the Public Hospitals Act is the basis for the authority of the Niagara Health System Board of Trustees to ensure the quality of care, including quality of medical care provided to the residents of Niagara. Additionally, the Ministry of Health and our LIN provide direction and targets for improvement in areas of hospital delivery that are priorities of the government. Improving emergency services is a priority of this government and as such, they have provided targets for improvement in wait times for all hospitals. Our performance against these targets are monitored on a regular basis by our Board, our LIN, and posted for public view on both our website and the Ministry of Health's website. The requirement of both the Ministry and our LIN is that we compare ourselves against these provincial Ontario benchmarks, not against individual sites of the Niagara Health System. So, the slide does show you the targets and I'm going to show our performance against those in a second, in terms of ensuring that for nine out of 10 patients that arrive at our emergency doors, that for the lower acuity patients or less sick patients, they're seen within four hours from triage to discharge, and for the most sick patients, that they are seen in eight hours from triage to transfer to a bed in the facility. Another target for improvement by the Ministry of Health is increase in patient satisfaction rates. So, moving on to why the case for change, why did we need to look at making changes in the delivery of services within the Niagara Falls Emergency Room? Through the ongoing quality monitoring that is completed by our Board on a regular basis and available on our website, there were a number of concerns identified regarding the quality of care being provided at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room. Wait times are higher than provincial benchmarks, the number of patient complaints, and particularly those towards physicians, an increase in patients leaving the emergency room without actually being seen by a physician, how the emergency room itself was being staffed by physicians in comparison to other similar-sized emergency rooms in the province and what is considered to be best practice, and also complaints and feedback through members of the Niagara Falls Foundation in terms of the donations that have been made towards this beautiful new emergency room and not seeing an improvement in the wait times, and the complaints were starting to impact on their ability to fundraise further in the Niagara Falls community. This next slide is really just to demonstrate that over the last four years, the emergency room volumes at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room have been relatively stable, with forecast initially to be about 47,000. We have seen an increase in the arrival by ambulance, which gives you an indication that the acuity or the sickness of the patients is increasing in terms of the types of patients being treated in that emergency department. This is the one target in terms of looking at the patients who are most sick against the benchmark that they are seen within eight hours of triage to admission to an inpatient bed. You can see that consistently over the last number of years, that the Niagara Falls site, which is the pink-purple color, in comparison to the provincial average, which is the next line of the dark blue, and the provincial target, which is the yellow line, the Niagara Falls site has consistently been higher than the provincial average and higher than the provincial targets. The next slide is the target in relation to the lower acuity, less sick patients, with the provincial target of being four hours from triage to discharge, again, with Niagara Falls site being the top pink line, is trending higher than the provincial average and higher than the provincial target of four hours. This next slide is just to give you relativity in terms of complaints, and you'll see that the three large 24/7 emergency departments in the region have the, understandably, they have the highest visits and so would also have a high number of complaints as well. But particularly what we saw for the Niagara Falls site was a trend, an increasing trend in relation to St. Catharines site, which does more visits between Ontario Street Site and Queenston Street Sites and Welland in terms of concerns regarding physicians. This is another indicator that we are expected to monitor ourselves against both provincially and in terms of our peer averages, and that's the number of patients who leave the emergency department because they are, for the most part, probably tired of waiting and they leave without being seen. And you can see that consistently, the Greater Niagara site has exceeded the community average and the national standard for left without being seen of 3% and is on an increasing trend with the last period being reported there of July 2009 of 5.3%. It was for all of these reasons that we felt that changes were required within the Niagara Falls Emergency Room. We were already in the process of implementing a number of changes at our two larger sites, in the Welland and St. Catharines Emergency Rooms, and starting to see indications of improvement. However, there was resistance to implementing some of these changes at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room and thus why we felt that bringing in an expert in the field to conduct a third-party review of operations of the Niagara Falls Emergency Room would provide us an objective means of identifying areas of improvement based on best practice elsewhere in Ontario and Canada. To that end, we brought in the Hay Group and Dr. Isser Dabinski, who is here with us this evening. He is an honors grad from UFT's Medical Program. He is currently an associate professor in both the Department of Family and Community Medicine and School of Health Policy Management at UFT. He has published more than 30 articles in scientific literature, lectured around the world, and has won many awards for excellence in teaching, including the prestigious PARRO Award. Dr. Dabinski will now describe the basis for the documentation or the recommendations based on best practice.
Thank you very much, Debbie, and thank you to the members of the council and to you, Mr. Mayor, for having me here this evening. I don't want to bore you with a lot of science and scientific methodology, but we thought it important that you understand some of the bases on which the observations we made and the recommendations were made were founded in research or in medical literature. I will tell you that the process was a difficult one because the whole area, specifically around physician staffing, has a limited amount of literature available and we felt that looking at international comparisons would not be valid because of different exigencies that exist in the international health arena or even comparing Canada to the United States. But what we did do was look at models that were published or in existence in the Canadian environment, and there are three. Those workload models I will describe for you in a moment, but in essence, what they are is studies that suggest the number of total minutes of time that a physician should spend with a patient or does spend with a patient in the real world based on their so-called CTAS categorization, meaning the level of acuity of illness. For your information, a CTAS-1 patient would be suffering from some immediate life-threatening emergency, so somebody who had had, for instance, a cardiac arrest or a severe episode of trauma, ranging down to a CTAS-5 patient, which would be a much lower acuity of illness, a visit that could perhaps be deferred to another environment, a family physician office. And there are three models in the Canadian literature that have been well-described. The Murray model, so-called, is the basis of alternative payment plans, which have come into existence in every province in the country over the last several years for emergency services. And in deriving the Murray model, which was derived to define compensation incomes for physicians, it was recognized that the amount of time and energy and skills that a physician would have to use to treat complex patients with severe illness would be greater than the amount of time for those at lesser levels of illness. And in an effort to define how much money should flow as a block to an emergency department to fund it for its physician activity in the absence of a fee-for-service model, they engaged in very complex and very sophisticated mathematical modeling to look at the number of minutes per patient by triage category, then defining the number of minutes or hours of physician service that would be necessary for the department to provide in exchange for the lump sum of money that was flowing to the department to support physician activity. So, this is not derived looking at nursing activity or administrative activity, this is purely a clinical model. And what you see in front of you is the number of minutes by patient that Michael Murray and others derive would be necessary. And the second column is the result of a stopwatch study that was done at St. Paul's Hospital in Vancouver. It's a hospital with a similar visit volume to the emergency department in Niagara Falls. It is more of a tertiary or quaternary-like environment. It deals with a high population of inner-city health issues, but this was a study that was done using a research assistant who literally sat with a stopwatch 24 hours a day, watched thousands and thousands of physician-patient encounters, and actually measured in minutes and seconds the amount of time spent by physicians with patients of those different triage categories. The Power Study, at the time that we actually published our review for the Niagara Health System, which I understand is available to you, was not published. It has, since we wrote that report, been published, so it has now been peer-reviewed by experts in emergency medicine. The Power Study was also a stopwatch study. It was done in over 20 emergency departments in southern Ontario of a variety of sizes, visit volumes, complexities, and communities of various sizes. And what you see defined for you there are the average number of minutes per patient by triage category. And what we did in the course of preparing our recommendations for the hospital was look at the number of hours of physician service available. We looked at the CTAS categories and the total visit volumes presenting to the Niagara System and then, or the Niagara General Hospital specifically, and then did some calculations to help us predict the number of minutes or hours of coverage would be necessary to conform roughly with those standards as defined in the literature. The thing that we observed is that, on average, the physicians in the Greater Niagara General were spending nine minutes per patient on the day and evening shifts. And as you can see, that nine minutes barely meets the number or amount of time defined in the Murray formula as taken to complete a patient encounter, but really doesn't match the norms or the averages or the observed real-time practice in a variety of environments at other emergency departments across the country, even for a CTAS-5 patient, and certainly doesn't come near to the amount of time that would be necessary for patients with a variety of other conditions. When we actually did the calculations based on the real visit volumes and the real CTAS categories of patients in Niagara Falls, the number we derived for minutes of coverage per day varied a little bit, but not to a great degree, and this is, by the way, quite similar to the numbers that we would derive in doing similar studies and a variety of other... other emergency departments in Ontario and across Canada, that the range, depending on the model you choose to use, is about ten percent or so in the number of minutes. But it, in the end, distilled down to the fact that our recommendation was to meet patient needs, to provide appropriately timely, empathic, holistic, comprehensive, high-quality care, would require somewhere between forty-two and forty-eight hours of total coverage distributed over a 24-hour period. Recognizing that the visit volume on the midnight shift is considerably lower than it is on the day and evening shifts, which, again, is the normal experience in emergency departments, our recommendation was that the night shift could and should be single-covered, but the remainder of that forty-eight, forty-seven hours of coverage should be distributed over the day and evening shifts, which would result, in essence, in having two physicians, or perhaps three, present for the period of time that would start at approximately eight in the morning and go till eleven or twelve at night, and one physician present from midnight to eight AM. Historically, the coverage model in the Greater Niagara Emergency Department was to have one physician present 24 hours a day. The way the work was divided was between one shift that lasted ten hours and a second shift that lasted fourteen hours, and went from the evening overnight till the next morning. One of the concerns that we had, as well as it pertains to that staffing model, is remembering that there were 5.3 full-time equivalent physicians working. If you add up the total number of hours of service that any given physician would provide over the course of a year, the number of hours of service was disconcerting to us. If you look at the literature around physician stress and physician burnout, there are numbers that attest to the fact that, number one, physicians, and I would add parenthetically, nurses, should not work more than an eight-hour shift because of issues around changes in the quality of decision-making, changes in the quality of the interpersonal interaction between the physician and his or her patients and families towards the end of a shift. So one issue that concerned us was the length of the shift, and the second was the cumulative number of hours that any physician would work in a year, which in most constituencies maximizes out at around fourteen hundred hours a year, as opposed to the almost eighteen hundred hours per year that physicians were working in the Greater Niagara General. In addition to that, that fourteen hundred hour-per-year national standard around hours of service is defined for physicians who provide not only clinical but other services, teaching, academic work, administrative work, et cetera, so their number of clinical hours was considerably less than that experienced by physicians working in this community. And for that reason, we recommended, as an additional recommendation, not only an addition to the number of physicians working in any given day, but also that the shifts that an individual physician worked should be shorter. I use the words "stress and burnout," and it's important to remember what some of the consequences are of stress and burnout, and they include things like adverse health consequences for the provider, him or herself, things like increased rates of depression, ischemic heart disease, hypertension, et cetera, increased rates of alcoholism and drug abuse, increased rates of marital breakdown, and an increased number of adverse interactions with patients, families, and other members of the healthcare team. In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, it's been well documented that in the last two hours of extended shifts, meaning those greater than eight hours in duration, that the rate of errors also increases, and our experience working with hospitals across the country, and my personal experience working with residents and emerging graduates from emergency medicine training programs, has also taught us that recruiting physicians, so long-term sustainability of a department, is difficult when the number of hours of service is extended, simply because current graduates have recognized some of the adverse health effects of working in an environment which lends itself to stress and burnout, and in general are reluctant to do that. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. McCauley, and I'll be happy to take questions towards the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Selcy, and councillors, for giving me this opportunity to talk with you. I've been an emergency physician in the Niagara Health System for 25 years, and I've been the regional chief for seven years now. And clearly, our program, our major concern is the patient, and, you know, that the care of the patient is as good as we can possibly provide in our emergency rooms. And this is what has, you know, created, this has been an awful storm that has been created with regards to the changes that, you know, I have been a proponent for. And the changes aren't, you know, huge changes, they're changes that will, can be implemented that can make patient care better. And, you know, I'm not going to give you any more statistics because I think you've had enough statistics tonight, so I'm just going to make a few very brief points. You know, double coverage, I must admit, it's a very simple concept, and the question I pose to many people is, what is wrong with a 10-hour double-cover shift at GNGH ER? That means that you get 34 hours in a 24-hour period of time. That means you have more time to spend with patients and looking after patients, and, you know, I pose that to everybody I've asked, and I've never had a negative comment about that. It's always been positive, and I continue to make that message and state that message. And that's what we're proposing, you know, with the additional hours of physician coverage, we go to 34 hours in a 24-hour period. The thing is that it's so important to have this additional physician coverage, mainly because of medical directives and our CSI unit. Now, you know, the, I can easily explain both of them. Medical directives, you know, it allows us and allows nurses to become part of the team. You know, if you've practiced in emergency medicine for 25 years, like I have, it's a team effort. Nobody can run the place by themselves. And the nurses of today want to practice at full scope, and if they practice at full scope, they need medical directives, and the nurses that are coming out today want to practice at full scope, and they want to be part of the team, and medical directives make them part of the team. Now, it just enables, a medical directive just enables a nurse to, with assessment and treatment of the patient, like if you come in with chest pain, you know, your triage, the history and physical is done, a cardiogram is done urgently to see, you know, if you have an acute MI or not, you know, so you're triaged appropriately, bloodwork's taken, it makes the system function better, you know, if you certainly have chest pain that's cardiac, you're put on a monitor, you're, you know, you're assessed very quickly. Medical directives allow us to do this, and it's very, it's vital these days. This is the way it's practiced, it's, and we're not unique, it's the way it's practiced in the province, and, you know, this is the way we have to keep up and provide good care for our patients. Now, we have 28 medical directives in the Niagara Health System, and, you know, they've, we have gone through all the sites and requested all, you know, we've gone over these ad nauseam, like, I mean, they're wonderful medical directives, and they will provide better patient care. The thing also is that's changing is a RAS unit, or what we call a CSI Investigation Unit. It's a rapid assessment unit for CTAS-3, 4s, and 5s. Now, Dr. Dabinski went over the CTAS Canadian Triage Acuity Scale for patients, and these patients in the RAS unit are 3s, 4s, and 5s, so they're of lower acuity. And when they're assessed by a nurse and medical directives are done, when you assess these patients, a lot of times you already have bloodwork, cardiograms, everything done for you, so you can assess the patient fully when the doctor has the first meeting with the patient. It certainly makes sense, it improves throughput, it makes the system work better. But it's clearly dependent on having two physicians there. You have to have one physician looking after the serious patients, the CTAS-1s and 2s, but you can have the other physician looking at, in the RAS unit, looking after 3s, 4s, and 5s. It makes, it makes sense, and, you know, and it works, and it's working at St. Catherine's, and we want it to work at GNGH. But clearly, we need to change the shifting model, clearly we need, you know, to implement the medical directives, and we have, and, you know, the nurses are on board, and we just want to improve patient care. That's where we're at.
So I want to share some early indications of the success that we're seeing to date. We are very early in the changes that have been implemented in the Niagara Falls Emergency Department, but we are starting to see patient times, wait times decreasing. The nurses are now able to work at their scope of practice, and physicians are spending more time with their patients. It is relatively early, the additional hours of physician coverage were implemented in September 15th, with the Fast Track and medical directives also implemented throughout September, and we expect over time, as we're able to move to the full recommendations, we've only covered three of the major recommendations coming out of the third-party review, but there are a number of other improvement opportunities that collectively we expect will see a significant improvement in wait times. I just wanted to share with you some comments in terms of what our nurses are saying. You can't compare the wait times, I've seen patients in and out of the CSI in two hours compared to the six to eight hours it used to take. Sometimes the patients aren't sure what to think about when they, when they're brought into the CSI, since it's a new service, but when they see for themselves how great the care is, and how they don't have to wait for hours to get it, they are really pleased. I would just like to also take this opportunity to just say how tremendous the nurses have been through this time of transition and change. I can't say enough about their commitment and their dedication to quality of care and in improving the patient experience. The time of this, of transition has not been easy for the nurses either. However, a consistent theme through this transition is the tremendous feedback that we're hearing from new physicians coming into the Niagara Falls Emergency Room to work shifts, and consistently, they tell us how great the nurses are and how great the environment is in the Niagara Falls Emergency Room. And to those in the audience today, and we do have some nurses and nursing staff with us, I would like to extend my appreciation to all of you who joined us here this evening. Change is not without challenges, and the, we are in the early stages, we have more work to do. In the, as well as the changes underway, we do have a number of issues that are not unique to the Niagara Health System, but they are provincial issues. They are the alternate level of care issue, patients admitted to emergency rooms without availability of beds, and our ongoing need to recruit additional physicians so that we can increase the hours up to as many as 40 to 48 hours of physician coverage. I just want to spend a minute talking about, because I know in your last council meeting you heard a bit about bottlenecks and flow through the emergency department, so I wanted to speak a bit about other issues that we face and what we're doing to deal with those. The Niagara Health System does continue to experience bed pressures due to alternate level of care patients occupying acute-care beds throughout our hospital sites. An alternate level of care patients are those patients who have finished their acute phase of their illness and really require care in a different setting, be it a long-term care home, or rehabilitation, assisted living, or at home with additional home care hours. There is a lack of resources in Niagara in that area, and therefore, sometimes the patients remain in hospital until those resources do become available. And these ALC patients then occupy acute-care beds that delay the admission from a bed or stretcher in the emergency room up to one of the nursing floors. We have about 229 ALC patients occupying our acute-care beds, which is about 33% of our bed capacity, and about 57% of our chronic care capacity is occupied by alternate level of care patients. And on any one day in Niagara, we have about 25 to 30 patients who are admitted to the emergency room awaiting a bed upstairs in our facility. That's similar to what's happening across the province on any one day in the province, there's about 700 patients who are admitted to emergency room waiting beds. This is a huge priority of this government in terms of improving emergency flow and reducing ALC, and we're certainly working very closely with the Ministry of Health and our LIN. There are a great number of initiatives underway in terms of process improvement, investments through the aging at home to increase capacity, and we are in the early stages of seeing the results of those efforts, but in the last three months, we have started to see our rates of alternate level of care patients occupying beds decrease, so those initiatives are starting to have an impact. And just lastly, and the physician recruitment issue, of course, probably one of the largest shortages of physicians in the province is in the area of emergency medicine, probably second only to mental health. And we are actively recruiting to bring in additional ER physicians so that we can even go beyond the 34 hours of coverage that we implemented as of September 15th in the Niagara Falls Emergency Room. So in summary, the changes underway at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room are to improve the quality of care, reduce wait times, and improve the quality of work-life for both our physicians and nurses. They are not about cost savings. For physicians, it will mean, it will mean shorter shifts and less fatigue and brno. We fully understand that change is difficult, but we do have a mandate to improve quality of care and patient experience. The nurses are now able to work to their scope of practice, which will maintain their skill and certainly enhance our ability to bring in new nursing grads who want to work in their full scope of practice and maintain their skill. Physicians under this model will be able to spend more time with patients, which was described by Dr. Dabinski, which is very important, that more sick that you are, the more time that a physician is able to spend with you. And that the changes being implemented are still relatively new, and will take some time for us to realize the full benefits of these changes, and certainly, we are committed to continuing the implementation and continuing to monitor our progress to ensure that quality of care is improved for all residents of Niagara. I just wanted to point out that in the short time we have this evening, I know there's probably many questions from councillors and from residents in the gallery and in the audience that probably would like to have us answer this evening, but we could probably be here for 48 hours and not answer all of them. So we do have a, an opportunity later this month in your community, and we welcome Niagara Falls residents to come out and ask any questions on any topic, including the new healthcare complex, plans for redevelopment at the Niagara Falls site, and the changes underway. So with that, thank you, and we'll certainly entertain.
Thank you, Mrs. Sevenpiper, we appreciate the comments you've made and the fact that you are having the advisory committee being held on the 29th, we noted that as well. I do have questions from members of council, first I'll begin with councillor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and can I say you can draw a crowd? We're at capacity and out the door. I think we're dealing with two issues here, and I was very glad to see Ms. Gladhill here, and out of curiosity, how many of the NHS Board members are here? Can they put up their hands?
Nine.
How many LIN members are here?
Three.
Yeah, and they're, okay. Thank you.
Outside.
Thank you very much. I think we're crossing, we have two issues going on here, and I thought, I think it was very interesting to hear Ms. Gladhill open with things we continue to hear. Because, thank you very much, councillor Wing and I spent an hour and a half with you last night in your Emerge, you took us on a tour, very close-minded, you were pretty clear on our position on the hip, on the LIN, the NHS Board, and the proposals in your hip. So I have to say, going there was a stretch for me, I'm being honest with you, I mean, I had better things to do. I have to say that we've gone through, and I'm going to discuss the Emerge and then the hip, and in regards to, council tasked our committee with looking at Dr. Paul's presentation to us, and I'm going to start with my committee's motions for me to follow to you. And it does involve some questions, but I will say, we did our Emerge tour last night, and I won't even call it a tour, because one of the docs said to me, what do you have to see? It's not what you can see, it's the function of the ER. And I have to say, that's what you dealt with. You didn't hand us a pretty ER, you handed us a very busy ER, and you really answered the questions that we gave you. I mean, I think the residents are sitting at home, that's very hard to follow. I know Dr. Dabinski knows his stuff inside and out, but really, quite frankly, they were probably not getting it after the first five minutes. Because we had a presentation here once before where the residents told us after, you can't, you can't do numbers like that. Because the sole purpose of, the residents wanting to see a better ER is shorter wait times and more docs. And I will say, I will, I will fight a fight that I think is fair for us to fight, our committee in two motions. Our committee, in two motions, and a lot of information and input from docs, your letter of response, and the concerns put for us, wanted us to do, first thing about the ER is ask you how we can help. What can our committee and this council do to help you make this initiative work? Doesn't mean we agree with all your other initiatives, that's a separate and aside, because we'll get into that. You opened the door to that with your letter and Ms. Gledhill's initial comments. The door to the hip got kind of open there. How can we help you in making this ER more efficient and make the two docs, and it's about time you utilized your nurses like the way that you are, I mean, they've been able to do it for 100 years, and I think the first question I asked was what took you so long? And I think that is, and your nurses are awesome. I mean, I listened to Dr. Luterbin and was able to, and I don't do that very easy, by the way, and was able to keep focus on what was going on around us at the same time. And your nurses and docs are worked off their feet. Your former docs who were there were also worked off their feet, so I'm not taking any credit away from them. You have hardworking staff. I think you should tell them a little bit more, and I think you should show them as opposed to just say it, but we watched it last night. So what can we do as a council and a committee that's so opposed to your hip? Help you make this initiative work? Because it's outside of our paradigm of what we're opposed to in the hip. How can we make this work without the statistics up there? I mean, normal speak, where people at home can get it. How can we help you?
For me, the probably a big area that you can help, and I know you do it already, is sell Niagara Falls as a destination. I mean, our concern has been through this difficult transition, that it's been painted as an area not, that physicians shouldn't come and work at. And I can tell you that the feedback that we've received from physicians that have traveled long distances to help us fill the shifts, it's a great place, a great environment, and your nurses are top-notch. So if there was a way that you can help us debunk the myth that that is not a good place to work, and help us recruit, we need to get up to 12 to 14 ER physicians to be able to staff it the way that Dr. Dubinsky said is best practice. And we have less than five physicians currently, and thus why we're relying on Health Force Ontario as a temporary measure. So the exposure to the physicians is great. We've had indications from a number of them that, and I don't want to, because their employers, current employer hospitals, to know, but they are very, very interested in coming to Niagara Falls, so your assistance in that regard. The sooner we can get staffed up to full staff of physicians, the quicker we can make significant changes in the wait times in your emergency room.
And Mrs. Sevenpiper, actually, just of course, as we've confirmed, we do have a doctor recruitment program, as you know, we have a budget committed each year, we have an act of committee. The challenge we have, of course, is the fact that we want to make this a place where it's inviting the doctors to work, and you've just confirmed to us tonight that, you know, when you see that type of a shift, the new docs coming around the area don't want to work in shifts or conditions like that, so obviously, we understand your changes are being made for that appropriate, very appropriate reason. So, you know, working a regular eight or 10-hour shift is more acceptable than having to work 14 hours plus or whatever. So I think first of all, your reaffirmation of that point is very well made to us this evening.
Working shorter shifts and not working by themselves either, on very busy shifts.
Sure, I appreciate that, thank you.
If I could just interject briefly, because I think you've asked an extremely important question. And I think that you're right, looking through my graphs and my data and reviewing the articles is a complex task. But there's a simpler task and a much more important series of statements that have been made to them that have to do with the fact that people who work in hospitals, people who are responsible for administering hospitals, either as the administrative team that works day-to-day, or the board who takes a governance responsibility for the organization, or the LIN who takes a broader regional mandate around health service organization, engage in that kind of activity because of a deeply sensed, deeply felt sense of commitment to improving the quality of care and well-being of the citizenry of the geographic area, some of which is a community-based mandate around community health services, but in the case of people who work in the hospital, has to do with the quality and the outcomes in the hospital-based environment. And if nothing else, if members of this council can help their constituents understand that, number one, that's the motivation. That's what people in this room and people in that hospital, be they administrative staff, nursing staff, physician staff, dietary staff, have as their mantra and their mandate, and that this is about making it as good as it can be for patients oftentimes in circumstances where they don't really want to be in the hospital. And number two, understand that there is a fiduciary responsibility on the part of the hospital imposed externally to use resources and guarantee the quality of use and the efficiency of use of those resources that has nothing to do with interpersonal issues, it has nothing to do with professional rivalries, it has to do with an externally imposed regulatory environment that demands that of the hospital. So if you can help your constituents understand that this is the hospital doing the best it can in trying circumstances on their behalf, I think that's personally, from my perspective, the best service you can provide to the hospital.
And Dr. Dubinsky, you may have heard of some of us talking about building up and not tearing down, so I think that's nice to hear our council this morning, this evening reaffirm that, the position that you're talking about. And we appreciate the fact that your job isn't an easy one, that change is not coming easily, so we understand that even more so now. And I think conveying to our residents that we should be held accountable for things that are within our control, and certainly you have the job of providing for healthcare, we understand that very well, and the fact that your changes are necessary and they're probably slow, slowly implemented, but certainly we understand that the challenges you have. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I have to point out yet again that the direction for our committee was strictly based on the changes in the Emerge, not the hip. So this council's position via 100 motions have not changed on the hip since Dr. Kits has been here, since the NHS Board accepted it, since the province hasn't listened to it. Those are issues that we can get into, but I don't want your comments to have the residents think that this council or the hip committee's perception of the hip is different. We had to take a really strong look and look at the ER, separating the side of what our concerns on the hip was. We asked you a number of questions last night, we asked your docs a number of questions last night. I'm going to ask you a number of them today, because quite frankly, I think a lot of them were important, and a lot of them had to do with money, finances, rumor. I mean, we could email, we will tell you, we probably get a dozen, two dozen emails a day in regards to things people have heard. So I don't want to talk about things people have heard, we really want it from the horse's mouth here. One of the comments here was, and that's no disrespect intended, it's the same. Look, and I can start a fight, that wasn't where I'm going. We asked you in regards to money, and there was a lot made on, we're going to be paying meta-merge docs a lot more than the docs would be paying here, that the money's going to be coming out of the NHS budget, which is in a huge deficit now as it is. Maybe you can address that, because you asked, we asked it last night, and I'm satisfied with the answer I have, but I really believe that the residents need to hear that. Are we spending $20,000 a month on meta-merge docs?
The, I'll maybe just start globally, and please interject at any time. Their physician remuneration, how they are remunerated is outside of our budget.
And that means what? It's by the province, not by the NHS?
That is correct. And physicians themselves can choose how they want to be remunerated, either on a fee-for-service basis, which means for every patient that comes through the door, they charge a certain fee based on how sick that patient is, or on a, what's called in an emergency department, alternate funding arrangement, which is essentially a salary regardless of the volume seen, and it's a very technical calculation, but it's basically a salary for the physicians. The physicians themselves choose how they want to remunerate, it's a direct agreement between them and the government, it has nothing to do with the Niagara Health System. So we, based on the hours of physician coverage, determine how many physicians we need and we recruit. And when we're at full staff, there's no cost to the Niagara Health System. But in any business, when you have vacancies with your employees, you often have to get into overtime in terms of paying premiums for those staff to do additional hours. Or in our case, sometimes we have to bring in agency nurses to fill, it's not, you know, it's not the desired solution, but it's a transition while you're recruiting. It's similar with physicians, and we're in a position now where we've had some physicians leave, and we do, we've had vacant shifts that we need to cover, because we have a choice. We either work through the transition and do our best working with these agencies to keep the 24/7 emergency department open, or we close it. And I don't think anybody in this room would ever want to see that happen. So there are two agencies that are in the province in terms of providing physicians to help hospitals through transition. One is meta-merge, and one is Health Force Ontario. Meta-merge is a private corporation, the Health Force Ontario is an arm of the government. We are not paying $20,000 a month to meta-merge. We do pay them a monthly administrative fee, which is in line with what many hospitals pay who are needing their service, but it's not anything close to $20,000 a year, sorry, month. In terms of Health Force Ontario, they are an arm of the government, so when they send in physicians to assist with their vacant shifts, there's no cost to the Niagara Health System, save and accept if any one of those physicians is coming in a long distance and needs overnight accommodation. That's the extent of the expense. I can tell you that since the changes were implemented in mid-September in the Niagara Falls Emergency Room, we staff about a third of the shifts with our own Niagara Falls Emergency Doctors, but a third with other Niagara Health System doctors, and the remaining third has been filled by Health Force Ontario doctors at relatively no cost to the Niagara Health System. We are actively recruiting, but during this transition, we will continue to work with, primarily Health Force Ontario, to fill the vacant shifts.
Thank you. And here's some questions from docs. They know you're here, and for those, not very happy with the forum here that just council will ask the questions, so we did open it and ask them to stream questions through us to ask you. One is, according to both the LIN and the NHS websites, GNGH has the shortest wait time of the three main ER departments. Why was the Niagara Falls site picked upon? And if complaints were disproportionately high at GNGH, that was not commented on by Dr. Dubinsky?
Sure. I'll try to address both of those. Number one, the healthcare environment is one in which there are in general, national, occasionally international, occasionally provincial standards. But the objective for any organization is to measure itself against national or provincial standards rather than local standards. And every department that really cares, is about, is really committed to quality of service delivery, be it physician, nurses, no matter what parameter you use to measure that, aspires to be not the best in its region or the best in its area, but the best in the country, particularly because it's an ongoing competition. Every hospital, every department, every physician group, every nursing discipline is seeking to improve all the time. So it's not only an important target, but it's a dynamic target. And to simply say that we are the best in the area, or we are the best amongst three or four or five hospitals in a defined geographic area, doesn't focus sufficiently, in my opinion and the opinion of my colleagues who wrote our report, on the imperative for all organizations to strive to be the best in a much broader constituency than local. And does the Niagara Falls general compare well with its peers locally? Yes, it does, but it does not compare well with literature or evidence or published or government-imposed standards provincially or nationally. So if we had been commissioned to review the other hospitals in the Niagara Health System, we may well have made similar comments. Our review was confined in this particular circumstance to the greater Niagara general, and that's why the comments were there.
And maybe if I could just add to that, sorry. The reason that we focused on the Niagara Falls and not St. Catherine's and Welland was because many of the initiatives that were, that ended up coming out of the third-party review were the initiatives that were underway already at those two sites, and we were seeing progress. We were already had implemented additional hours of coverage, medical directives and fast-track areas over the last number of months. And so that was the reason we focused on primarily the Niagara Falls Emergency Room, because there had been historically resistant to implementing some of these changes. Need to change.
... yesterday, and quite frankly, on our tour, MPP Crater joined Janice and myself, so it was the three of us with a bunch of docs and administration. We've heard endlessly about the admit no beds. So if you can simplify the admit no beds for the residents, and how does your double coverage and your nurse triage fix the admit no bed problems? Because there isn't one doc that I've talked to in regards to the admit no beds that hasn't said to us, you just hand us more money, it's provincial funding, we don't have enough money to move the admit no beds to floors that are closed or have a restricted number of beds. So how will your double coverage fix the backlog in the back? Because from what we're understanding, once you get to a certain point of admit no beds, you can't move, and you lower acuity. So for the residents, for those with the earaches, the sore throats, the sniffly noses, when our kids are asthmatic and we come, those are your lower acuity. How do you move them if you've got no room in the back to do anything?
So I'll start, and then I'll hand it over to the physicians who work day in and day out in this model. Emergency room flow is multifaceted. There are, one initiative in and of itself isn't going to fix the problem. The external report identified a whole range of initiatives that were working, some are being implemented, some are yet to do. So the physician hours of coverage in and of itself will not fix the problem. But that combined with a fast-track area where the lower-acuity patients can be seen by a second patient, the medical directives to speed up the time when a patient arrives, there's another issue that we'll need to work on in terms of consultant response times. How quickly, when an ED doctor calls a consultant, do they respond to assist with the diagnosis to determine the final destination? And that may prevent patients being held overnight until a consultant comes to see them the next morning. There's the issue of the ALC, the number of beds being occupied, I talked about that earlier. And there are a number of LIN initiatives in terms of investing in community resources to alleviate those patients needing to stay in hospital. As well, we're participating in process improvement initiatives that look at, if you've in business have heard the Lean methodology, it's really streamlining and reducing steps out of a patient's journey through the hospital to try to shorten and compress it. And that includes patients in the building, timely discharge, making sure discharges are done by 11 o'clock in the morning, making sure that there's good utilization. It's multifaceted. We're working on all aspects of the patient journey, and I can tell you, not one initiative is going to fix it. We have to work on everything, and we are.
How long till you'll be able to have statistics that will show us whether your double coverage and your nurse triage is working? Because we want to see something tomorrow. You very clearly, and really, I think with the distrust on the hip and the LIN and the NHS, you're really under the gun to show us something tomorrow. Your docs were real blunt when they said, you know what, tomorrow's not going to happen. Tomorrow is not, so how do you say to the residents? Because really, I'm out on a limb here saying, I'll trust you to try to make this work. How do you tell the residents, this is our benchmark, this is when we'll know when it's working or not? Because I think they want to know that sooner rather than later, because from all the explanations our committee has heard and everything we've gone through, it is hard for us to criticize when at home the residents are hearing more docs, less wait time, more nurse involvement. You can't argue that. But tell us when we're going to be able to see some sort of results from this initiative.
Well, you have our commitment that as we've been in Port Coburn and Forty, you're very transparent on the numbers, what's working, what do we need to work on, months into those conversions. We will do the same with the conversion, the additional hours and what we're doing in Niagara Falls. So typically, we report on a monthly basis, and after the data is coded in the charts, we can start producing data in terms of reducing wait times and patient satisfaction. I can- I can tell you anecdotally that we're seeing reductions, but I know you want the hard data, and certainly you have our commitment that as soon as the data is available, we'll start reporting. I just caution again that we're in the early stages of the transition. You heard from the physicians, it's not going to happen overnight. There are many things that are being worked on simultaneously, and you can still see even in the province that the provincial average is still over the provincial target. So all hospitals are working on this collectively and struggling. It's not a quick fix. There needs to be, we need to work inside, but there also has to be community investments outside. And it's just not going to be a quick fix, but you have our commitment that we will share the data as soon as it's available.
Thank you. Another thing our committee looked at was your HR problem within the NHS. I mean, it's been very well documented. You have a non-confidence vote by the doctors, and you have a sanction by nurses. We really felt that you have to look at that problem inside before you can fix anything outside. So our committee asked us to highlight to you, those are our concerns, and those are the concerns we're hearing from the docs. Because I have to tell you, out of 95% of the doctors that have contacted us in regards to the HIP and this initiative, the trust is just not there. I don't have to tell you, you work with it every day. Your non-confidence vote show that doesn't matter to me whether it was five beats four, or what your numbers were in regards to the nurses and the docs. Your problem's there. And our perception on this side is, you've dug your heels in, it's a because I can, and we're not going to work with them. And I say that because a comment from a doc knowing we were coming into this meeting was, "How can we expect the administration to listen to councils and the politicians' concern when the administration won't listen to your own internal docs in GNGH?" Now, you can argue that. You can say you do. This is what they think. This is why they streamed these comments and concerns to us. Don't shoot the messenger. I'm telling you, the emails and the calls and the concerns coming to us. So I think one of the overriding comments is, "Fix your house," because something inside is broken. And you know what? Maybe with some, you won't be able to. Maybe the trust is broken. Well, clearly with the majority of the docs, the trust is broken. But for your information, we did highlight that to the NHS members, that the members of, the political members of our committee sat with last week. Which takes me to our next motion of council. Council gave our committee initiatives to address, the one I dealt with here. But the other was the stream of accountability. And I said to you yesterday in the hospital, "You are simply unemployed. If we expect you and your docs to stand here and say to us, 'We can change this,' we are sadly mistaken. You have a board of directors. You have, they answer to the LIN, who answers to the province, who won't answer to us." I mean, that's the chain of command. I, I'm not, the criticism is to the province. It's not to the NHS. We can throw enough criticism to all three levels. But the bottom line is, we don't have the right people here to answer our complaints on the HIP, the LIN, and the NHS. So this is not a free-for-all, let's beat you down. We don't have the right people here. So I'm going to go on to the concerns of the committee. The committee really had an issue in regards to, we made two motions. This council supported us having a budget to run an ad to do our, to do awareness committee. Really, we thought it was a waste of money. Once we sat down and talked as a committee, knee-jerk reaction to the presentation we had here, we really didn't think that money would be well spent taking out an ad for a "Let's Fight Back" campaign. What our committee did decide was, we really needed to address the NHS members, which is not you. So I'm not going to, my federal council members have other questions for you, so I'm going to just give the idea of our committee. We went on the NHS website to try to contact the NHS board members. Well, there's no contact information for the NHS board members. There's not. And it doesn't matter whether you like that there's not, there's just not. They're there, they're, they're, experience is there, everything's there, there's no contact information. So I want the residents to understand that these are the people directly responsible for the decisions for healthcare in the Greater Niagara General Hospital. I didn't know who they all were until I went on the website, and the residents really don't know who they are. So they are Betty Lou Suter, Mary Turner, Stephen Butts, Ms. Sevenpfeifer, Dr. Joanna Hope, Jean Armitage, Bruce Cahill, Trevor Cooper, Carmen Dix, Helen Eggleton, Mike Henry, Steve Hudson, Dragon Matovic, Joe McCollum, Floretta Palladino, Jennifer Patrick, Stephen Pillar, Dr. Ready, David Schramm, Mark Shirk, and Alan Simpson. And really, we were going to run a full-page ad saying, "Contact your NHS board members." But simply putting their name there wasn't going to help us because there was no contact information. There continues to be none. This was pulled off your website an hour before council. Those are the people that really we need to address. I'd like to thank Carme Dixon, Dragon Matovic. They did meet with the members of council that are on the Fight Back Committee. We had quite a lengthy conversation with them. I think that's the second part of this discussion. I'll sit down in front of my other council members, and by agreement of the three of us, we'll raise the issue of the NHS board and our meeting with Carme Dixon, Dragon Matovic at the end of this discussion under this topic. But I will say, you know, we've beat you up a lot. I think a lot of it is justified. I think our biggest problem is we can't get the powers that be to listen to us. So the HIP's a different discussion. We'll have that when the ER is done, and you're done your questions with the ER. But this is not something that this council, or the NHS, or the LIN can fix, or the administration, because they are simply employees. Thank you.
Other members of council, a comment please. Yes, Council Diddy Addy.
Thank you, worship. I forget what I was going to say. I just have a couple of questions. I don't want to hold the floor here, but I know I had made reference before to the question, and I know you addressed it, the bottleneck. And Dr. Dubinsky, you had made a reference earlier to the amount of hours and shifts that a nurse should work. Now, I just wanted, and I don't know the answer to this question, what right now do they work? Do they work eight-hour shifts, or bigger shifts? Or what do the nurses currently work?
The nurses work 12-hour shifts, or substantively 12-hour shifts.
And it's just part of my, and I know there's a lot of issues to this. It's a prickly problem, and I understand it's not just one thing. But I know we also have a nurse shortage, as well as an ER-doctor shortage. So we have shortages on both ends. And if in the report, it said that there's fatigue and a lot of other things that'll come from that, from stretching the doctors' efforts, the same must be said for the nurses. And I've heard nothing but positive about the nursing staff you have down there. As a matter of fact, I've heard from doctors that have come into this area to work, that said, "We love working down here. The nurses are great." But my question is, are you concerned about stress or the burnout of the nurses? And also in regard to the nurses, you had mentioned that it's harder to recruit into an area when there's so many hours at stake regarding doctors. I'm assuming, is it the same with the nurse? Because they're going to want the same quality of life. And I'm just wondering if you could respond to, I wonder if that's part of our bottleneck issue, the nurse issue, and if you could maybe just comment on that?
Nursing is not my personal area of expertise, which is why one of the members of the team that prepared this report was a nurse who is an emergency department nurse and former emergency department manager. And I don't apologize for her absence, since she's off on parental leave. I'm glad for her absence. But I can tell you, based on my knowledge of the literature and the environment, at least a broad overview of the answers to the questions you're asking, which are, there is no question that there is an equally substantive, if not perhaps more substantive, body of literature, medical studies, psychological studies, studies in the industrial psychology literature around 12-hour shifts for nurses, attesting to the fact that they are disadvantageous for many of the same reasons as they are for physicians, including stress, burnout. Interestingly enough, more recently, evidence perhaps suggesting that cancer rates in nursing staff, particularly breast cancer rates, are related in some way to working extended shifts. Suggestions in the past that the rate of spontaneous abortion in nurses was higher because of working extended shifts. The difficulty is that upfront, the 12-hour shift, particularly to nurses, with all due respect to the people who I can't see making faces behind me, but emergency nurses tend to be at the younger age of the spectrum. It has, emergency department nursing has a lot of appeal and allure to young nurses emerging from training because of the dynamism, the excitement, the really close interaction with patients, families, physicians, and an array of other healthcare providers. So when you're young and somewhat inexperienced, I think there's a certain degree, and I don't say this to be pejorative, I just think it reflects the reality, a certain degree of naivety around how hard I can work, how long I can work, especially because the quid pro quo for the 12-hour shift is that it translates roughly to three days of work followed by four days off. And that lots of free time when you're young and you see the opportunities to perhaps spend more time with a young family, perhaps engage in other recreational or social activities. In some nurses' cases that I'm aware of, because they have financial commitments, they've just bought a house or engaged in some other major investment, perhaps even work part-time at another job in addition to your job, make the 12-hour shift attractive. Those of us that have perhaps been in healthcare longer have recognized some of the downside of those 12-hour shifts. But it's in an environment in which the nurses can make those decisions for themselves through self-scheduling and a regulated or a work environment in which nurses have the strength, the capacity, the power to define their own hours of shifts. They oftentimes opt for 12 hours, but it would certainly not be my recommendation or that of any other people that I know that I would rely on to give sage advice about what they should be doing.
Thank you. You talk more than Carolyn does. Well, do you have plans? Are there plans for more nurses, for bringing in more nurses? I don't know, maybe if somebody could answer that question to help with that. Part A and part B, do you ever have to close off sections of the ER or ED, whatever it's called, because of a lack of nurses? Does that ever happen? Say, two parts.
In terms of, maybe I'll just start more broadly. The focus on nursing recruitment is just as intensive as focusing on physician recruitment. And we have seen over the last number of years, our vacancy rate for nurses has come down substantially to the point where our nursing vacancy rate is below both other hospitals within our LIN and in the province. So we've been quite successful in recruiting nurses to Niagara despite the center that you mentioned. We also have a very high retention rate. So once we recruit them, they stay in Niagara, and we have very, very long-service employees. So we're doing well in that regard. But as you say, there's, we still have, you know, having, I think we're at about 5.3% vacancy rate for nursing. Every time we can't bring a nurse in, a nurse has to work overtime or to ensure safe patient care. So have we ever had to close off sections of an emergency department? You know, we can't stop the ambulances from arriving at our door or patients arriving at our door. So it's an area that we bend over backwards to try to bring in nurses, agency nurses. Sometimes the nurses do work short, unfortunately, and that's the reality across the province. But certainly, in terms of the length of the shifts as well, that's somewhat driven by the collective agreement too, in terms of dictating the length of the shift. But to your question around, are there plans for additional nurses? And I assume you mean additional budgeted nurses over and above the staffing complement that we have in the Niagara Falls Emergency Department. We base our staffing levels, similar to everything else, based on benchmarks, and we look at other similar-sized emergency rooms, the visits, the acuity, and staff accordingly. And the staffing that's within the Niagara Falls Emergency Department today is comparable. You know, we're looking at, are there some additional support, ordering, other things that are needed to help the nurses do what they need to do. But you know, we're, as you heard earlier, we're stretched in all of our areas. We're, you know, we've signed an accountability agreement. We need to be as efficient as we can in all of the areas, and to do that, we look outwards and make sure that we're staffing appropriately and safely compared to benchmarks.
All right, thank you, through you, worship. And I take that as a no, more or less, a loquacious no. But the question that I have here is, and I don't think anybody in this room will argue that more doctors is great. I mean, we're happy to have more doctors. That's wonderful. I'm just hoping that we're actually going to address the issue. And I know it's too soon to tell. Ironically, today, when I dropped my son off at the daycare, lady was on crutches, and she was in the hospital yesterday with a foot problem, and she was there for, it was a very extended term. You know, she was there for six hours waiting for, and she had a number of comments. But the point is, I know it's too soon to gauge something that you're just coming out with. So I mean, you know, we can reserve the comments until you have a chance to actually roll it out. But that's just, I guess, one of my concerns is, okay, so we have these extra doctors, and if we don't have extra beds, and if we don't have enough nurses, and certainly, they're working 12 hours, they got to be feeling the stresses. I mean, are we really going to actually put a dent in the problem, or is it just going to move the problem around? Is it going to shift the problem? Maybe we'll get looked at quicker, we just won't get serviced quicker? I don't know. It just brought a whole bunch of other questions to mind. But for now, that's great. I got a couple of my questions answered, and I'll pass it along to the rest of my councils that would like to ask questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Council comes.
Yes, thank you, worship. Thank you for coming here, and I think that maybe if this kind of dialogue and discussion was held on a regular basis, many of the problems that we're experiencing and have experienced probably wouldn't have been to this extent. There's been a real animosity and bad feeling that is not healthy for any community, and I think it's appropriate to get together periodically on a regular basis to respond to some of our concerns. You might think that we're all a bad group of council members here who bitch and moan and cause problems and make statements, but I can assure you, it's for good reason. It's because people are calling us, people are approaching us. We have a committee set up, which has the opportunity to talk with the medical doctors, and it's really confusing when you say that, you know, you have to thank the doctors for coming and the nurses for coming here tonight. When I look out through the crowd, I see at least five doctors that I know that have been extremely unhappy with the system and are puzzled to us, what is being done to help them? And the nursing people are extremely unhappy. Obviously, if they've, but a sanction on Niagara Falls General Hospital, that sends a message. And what is being done to try to overcome this problem with the doctors internally? I know that they're very unhappy about the HIP program, about the dismantling of Niagara Falls General Hospital with the different disciplines leaving, and many of the doctors indicating that they are very unhappy about that, in fact, saying, "We won't be here in your community, we're going to be in another community." In fact, everybody on this, around this table, with the exception of the mayor, has been in opposition to the HIP plan and has been very vocal in trying to support the medical profession and support the nurses, to try to make sure that Niagara Falls, which is the second-largest municipality in the region, and the population and the growth is going up, the largest one, St. Catherine's, is going down. I don't want to go in, it's history now about the choosing the location. I have a half-inch, or maybe more, of resolutions and letters that were sent out with respect to the hospital location, with respect to the HIP plan since the year 2000. Not indicating that we want everything in Niagara Falls, not saying that we're the best and we want everything here, basically saying, "Centralize the hospital. Put it locally where everybody has equal access." Paul Deary. Paul Deary, Paul Corbin. This is the way that people feel. I'd like to hear what they have to say. Anyway, but all of these people could have been very happy, and we have it in this correspondence, which I gave to Ms. Glenhill when we had the meeting and asked her to peruse that and look at what, "We're not down here bitching and moaning and bellyaching. We thought we had some constructive ideas." And we had the former administrator from Niagara Falls, John Carter, who was extremely helpful in, sorry about that. I usually don't bring that in with me, so I apologize for that. The, John Carter helped us immensely in formulating our ideas with respect to this. But here we are, we've moved along, the hospital is underway, supposed to be a St. Catherine's hospital. I- I suggest to you, in a very short period of time, it's going to be a regional hospital. And in the location it is, it's really not fair, it's really not beneficial to the people in the Niagara region. And I think that's pretty sad, and we're going to have to live with that, certainly for the rest of our days anyway. Anyway, what can you, what can you tell us you're doing within the system to get the doctors on side, to get the nurses on side, so that they're happy? They're not happy?
No, I didn't, thank you for the opportunity to address that question because I didn't get a chance earlier to answer that. And so, unfortunately, Dr. Hope, our interim Chief of Staff, fell ill over the weekend, and she would be the most appropriate individual to speak to the initiatives underway in terms of dealing with some of the physician concerns. Certainly, with the vote of non-confidence that back in the fall, our board certainly took it very seriously and brought in Dr. Cruthers, who interviewed the physicians and developed a number of recommendations. That report is also on our website, along with an action plan that has been developed step-by-step to deal with the recommendations arising from that report. And one of the biggest areas of concerns, and I know Dr. Reddy's somewhere back there, was the medical staff bylaws. And we've spent the last number of months developing a new set of bylaws that are, will be going out to consultation very soon to the physicians. That's just one example. So, with respect to all of the, those initiatives through Dr. Hope's leadership and medical advisory and our board, they're working through those issues. With respect to the nurses' censure, we have a great number of initiatives underway. Again, it's a huge focus of our board in terms of monitoring progress in dealing with all of the issues identified by the nurses. Two or three areas where we've seen dramatic improvement is on labor relations. Our grievance rates for nurses are down dramatically from, I think, over 12% three or four years ago, down to less than 3%, closer to what it should be. Vacancy rates are down substantially. We have a new chief nursing executive is here with us this evening, who was formerly the provincial chief nursing executive, who has worked very hard to elevate the status of nursing within our organization. And you heard, you know, the changes that are underway in the Niagara Falls Emergency Department are one example of helping the nurses to work to their scope of practice. So, there are a great number of initiatives underway. In each of those areas, they're posted on our website, they're reported regularly to our board.
I've always looked up to the medical profession of some, something special leaders in our community. And when I hear doctors say they can't speak out, they can't express themselves, they'd be censored, particularly with the concern they had with respect to Dr. Schrag when he was here, I just couldn't believe that medical doctors would have concern about speaking out of their own profession. And it just, it just blew me away when I started thinking about that. And then I hear recently that the opportunity they have where the doctors get together and discuss issues to send them, all of that opportunity is being disbanded, and that is not, not an opportunity for them now to have that kind of input as local doctors into the system.
So, there's two issues that you spoke about there. First is about, you probably put it simply, I think what you're saying, is there a don't-talk policy against our physicians? Certainly, physicians have, as we all do, in terms of our professions, we have, they have a professional code of conduct and ethics with their own college of physicians and surgeons. As well, when a physician joins the Niagara Health System by virtue of being granted privileges and being credentialed into the Niagara Health System to provide service, they're not an employee, but they, there are certain expectations in terms of conducting themselves consistent with our hospital bylaws and, and the Niagara Health System policies in terms of code of conduct. And that's no different than many businesses in terms of the expectations of their employees in terms of how they conduct themselves. It is, although we don't currently have a media policy, it is, quite frankly, the norm in most hospitals where there is a media policy that physicians do sign off on in terms of how they, before going and speaking with the media, they work with their, with their hospital in terms of ensuring that the right messaging, accurate messaging gets out to the community. Certainly, we, the, our framework for our physicians is embedded, our expectations are embedded in our bylaws and our policies and procedures and code of conduct.
I think you answered my question. I can't believe that that exists and that the doctors would be under that kind of pressure and scrutiny, so. Anyway.
Let me just, before you reach the wrong conclusion.
Well, this isn't, this isn't my, this isn't, this isn't my conclusion. These are people in the medical profession that have brought this to me, and I'm asking you to respond to it.
Okay.
It's not my, it's not my conclusion. I want to know an answer from what has been brought to me.
Okay, so, let me just reassure you and through you, the constituents from whom you are hearing on this issue, that it is the norm in every hospital in this province and in this country to have a set of hospital medical staff rules and regulations and bylaws that address a whole array of areas of physician behavior, included in which is a media policy that defines when and under what circumstances physicians interact with the media. This is not a Niagara Health System issue, this is a standard that applies to all hospitals in the country.
Okay, and what about the doctors, their opportunity to meet and?
Oh, sorry, second, second point. The, I think the change that you're referring to is a proposed change that's being discussed with our new medical staff bylaws. And it's not to take away the opportunity for local site physicians to meet, it's looking at implementing a medical staff structure that both acknowledges that we're a regional system and we need to look at how services are delivered regionally. And our programs are organized, we have an emergency that's organized regionally, maternal child, mental health, all of our programs are organized that way. And so, we're trying to, in the new set of bylaws, establish a medical staff structure that reflects our regional nature. Part of that discussion, and Dr. Reddy, the President of the Medical Staff Association, has been actively involved in those discussions, he knows what the discussion has been, is that we, through the implementation of the medical bylaws, it's not our intention to take away the opportunity for local physicians to meet, it's how we're going to enhance it and create committees that not only have local physicians meeting, but also multidiscipline, other disciplines, so nurses, OT, PT, physiotherapists, replacing it with a new structure whereby the chief medical officer would go on on a regular basis and meet with the local physicians to hear their concerns and bring them back to the medical advisory. So, there's no intention to take away a local voice.
Okay, thank you for that. I understand that there are some, I don't know whether it's committees or municipalities, and we have a committee set up here that have the opportunity to meet with you regularly to discuss concerns. I think there was one set up in Fort Erie and also one in Fort Colvin. Is that something that would be helpful to improve our dialogue and discussion and communication with respect to going forward?
Certainly, we have a number of, I'm not sure if I'm speaking, or you're speaking specifically to our, our community education sessions, that we've had a great number in the southern tier over the last number of months, and we have one in Niagara Falls the end of this month, if you're referring to those. Or the community standing committees that are embedded in our bylaws that were created as part of the Health Services Restructuring Commission. Those are, those are, those were directed legally to be bound into our bylaws. Certainly, those standing committees do provide great advice and our sounding board. They're not decision-making, or the board has ultimate authority, but they do provide.
It improves the communication, and if ever there was an opportunity to do that, because as we said before when we discussed this at the committee, nothing more important than healthcare. We want to make sure that we move forward with something positive in spite of our disappointment with some of the things and some of the decisions that have been made in the past. I think that the meeting we had was extremely informative. We had with the two members of your board that we had last week, and somebody said that it was kind of a rocky, rough ride. I thought it was extremely professionally handled and well-done, and I got a lot of good information from the two members that attended, but it became extremely clear to me why we're here today and what we're, what, why has all this happened? Why do we have so much discontent? And it's because you went from a local hospital board to members who were appointed to the NHS. And when you asked them, "Well, you know, when you made this decision, what about your representation to Niagara Falls?" We don't represent Niagara Falls. That was a response to people who live in this community. They represent the region and the healthcare for the NHS. So, obviously.
But what we, that was on a, when the Niagara Health System was formed back in 2000, the board that was created at that time was not representation.
I understand.
So, as long as the Niagara Health System has been in existence, we've had a board of trustees that are, live within Niagara, but they're, they're there to represent the interest of all Niagara residents.
That's why I like Peter Peramos's resolution about having elected people from the municipalities on the NHS. Anyway, my final.
Could I just make one comment? I just wanted to, are the makeup of our board in terms of elected versus non-elected, representational versus non, our board reflects the, how boards are structured across the province for hospitals?
I have no argument with that. I'm just saying, I think it could benefit municipalities like Fort Erie and Fort Colvin and Niagara Falls, who feel they're not coming out on the top with the HIP program to have local representation and even elected representation. I think it comes down to the final, you're having your struggles and we're having our struggles, comes down to dollars. How do we, how do we get the provincial government to realize the need for funding in the province, not only for the Niagara region, but throughout the province? When you talk about $18 million this year, 110 million accumulated deficit, there's got to be an end somewhere. How do we get the province to realize that more money has to come? And even in the Kitz report, it indicated that we're underfunded here in the Niagara region. How do we help in trying to get funding for the programs?
Well, the, the, as you said, there's been a number of reports done of the Niagara Health System in terms of efficiency review, the Dr. Kitz review. The development of the hospital improvement plan itself was, as you've heard earlier, was the necessary first step in terms of how could, how, what could we do locally in terms of services, service realignment, recognizing that even today, even if we had a case today for more money, with the, with the economy the way it is, the new budget forecast, revenues are down for the province, it's looking pretty bleak for everybody. And so, we've had a, you know, we've, we've demonstrated that we're efficient, that if there was a case for base adjustment, it is for the Niagara Health System. We're continuing to work closely with the Linn and the ministry. But quite frankly, speaking with one voice in Niagara would help.
Well, and I think this is going to help accomplish that objective because our committee, without exception, is not happy with the historical aspects of what's happened, but we realize we have no choice but to move forward in a positive vein, and we'll, we'll do what we can. All we ask is more dialogue and discussion and more involvement because that's what's going to make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Yes, Counsel Rainey.
Thank you, and just to piggyback on one of Counsel Thompson's comments, and it was in regards to the nurses and the doctors being afraid to speak out. If you see the mess in front of me, this is all the questions that docs who are not comfortable speaking to you have sent us. Because we don't make this stuff up, like, this is the correspondence that we're getting. But I thought the most poignant part of our meeting with the NHS board, and I'm very thankful, Ms. Glenn Hill and your NHS board, and particularly the Linn, the Linn board members here, was when one of the gentlemen we were speaking to said in response to the question, I said, "Do you not watch TV? Like, do you not read the newspaper? Do you not get that the Niagara residents are not happy with your acceptance of the HIP report?" And the response that I got was, and this is from an NHS board member, and I really hope the Linn takes this to heart, they said, "If we speak publicly, they run the risk of being kicked off the board." That's a verbatim quote. I wrote my question and their responses, they answered me. My two fellow council members were sitting at the table with me. If there was anything alarming, it was that comment, because they validated the docs, they validated the nurses, and they validated anybody who tells council that they are afraid to speak. So, I really want your board and I want your Linn board to look at that really strongly. Because if we left with anything, it was shaking our head over that statement. And I think it speaks volumes on open, transparent, and accountability. The docs say they're not getting it, this council didn't believe we were getting it, the public didn't believe they were getting it. And I just, I wanted you to hear that from us. Three of us were in the room and heard the same comments. So, Ms. Glenn Hill, I hope you take back to heart, I hope your board takes a look at comments from NHS board. Who would say that to us in private? That, to me, that's very, very alarming.
Thank you. I think we've had sufficient discussion, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Glenn Hill and Mrs. Sevenpiper for being here tonight on behalf of council. Counsel Peter, did you have another comment? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. I thought you were, I could answer questions.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to start off by reading a bit of an email that I think is the theme of some of the things that other people around the table have said. And it says, "I wondered if your questioning this evening could address the devastating morale problems at G&amp;G." Excuse me, from an employee. I feel I have a pretty good insight into some of the problems. On two occasions, I personally witnessed a present CEO in the hospital with hands on her hips talking down to the doctors in the most condescending manner. I was shocked that the physicians did not walk out on her. Many of the problems seem to stem from a lack of respect and true caring for the staff. More and more of our doctors are relinquishing their admitting privileges because of their frustration and disgust with the administration. The staff cannot speak to anyone because of hospital policy." Your Worship, the email goes on and on. These are, these are just some of the comments, and I know that most of the people around the table received them. And I'm sure that to Mrs. Sevenpiper, I'm sure that she received some of them as well. And I know that in your presentation up here, you told us that you had complaints about the doctors. We have both sides sort of saying that they have complaints about each other. And I'm just wondering, I guess, myself, is, did you, did you ever sit down with the ER doctors and discuss with them the complaints that you had about them, so that you can sort of come to some resolution?
So, there's, again, Dr. Hope, our Chief of Staff, would be the most appropriate person to answer some of those questions. I can reassure you, and I have, there are emergency physicians, Dr. McColl and Dr. Litterman are also here with us this evening, that can speak to, in fact, the number of times we tried to work with the physicians to implement necessary changes at the site. Even over the course as we were implementing it, communication from Dr. Hope on a number of occasions went unanswered. Communications from me went unanswered. And I've heard Mr. Diodati use this analogy a number of times, that there's always two sides of the story, and there's a third side, and somewhere in between is the, is the truth. And certainly, I can, I can tell you that the people behind me, we have worked very, very hard, and you heard our fiduciary responsibility to ensure, our first and foremost mandate is to improve quality of care. And sometimes, if it, if we, if the answer is no, that is perceived as we didn't listen. And so, I can reassure you that we worked, we tried to work through this issue with the physicians, and we respect the fact that they have chosen to, to take a different position. That's totally their choice. That's totally their choice. Our, our mandate is to do the right thing, no matter how difficult it is to improve quality of care for the residents. And, you know, I've heard a number of you talk about how many times you receive the emails, the complaints, and I appreciate how hard it must be for you to do your own mandate in your council job and then receive those complaints. I would just encourage you that we can't do a better job of what we do unless we receive those complaints. So, I would, if you would direct those, those complaints, we have a complaint system, we have a, a, a way that we investigate every single complaint. We, if we don't have the details, if we hear complaints anecdotally, without investigating each one, we can't change the system. So, I know MPP Crater receives a great number of, and so does the mayor, and those individuals are encouraged and directed to go through our complaints process so that we can deal with them, in the same way we do encourage physicians and staff to work with their managers to work through the issues.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I guess to yourself again and Mrs. Sevenpiper, I appreciate the fact that you have your side, they have their side, and then somewhere in the middle could be a third side. And I'm just wondering, has a third-party arbitrator ever been brought in to deal with the doctor situation?
Particularly with the Niagara Falls Emergency Room?
Yeah, particularly with the medical doctors and the NHS and the standoff that you have.
We, part of the, the mandate back in the fall when we brought Dr. Crowthers in was to identify some of the issues at that time which we're working through. Specifically on this issue with the new interim Chief of Staff, Dr. Hope worked very hard to respond, listen to what the physicians had to say, and try to get them to the table, try to clarify their concerns. There were a number, I can tell you that there were a number of demands put forward that we just couldn't meet in term, one of the demands was no more changes for the next four years. No more cuts ever to the Niagara Falls Emergency. We just can't make those types of, those, those promises, nor could you promise your constituents that they're not gonna have tax increases for the next four years. So, you know, there's, again, I come back to the, the, the changes that we were, that we're implementing at the Niagara Falls Emergency Room are no different than changes that we implemented at the St. Catherine's site, the Welland site, and that have been implemented across the province without this reaction.
If I could just...
Did you ever bring in a third-party arbitrator? I'm sorry.
Not specifically for this issue, no, we did not.
No, you did not? Okay. So, you had their side, they had their side, and somewhere there might have been a common ground, but your side won?
We had a third-party review that talked about best practice. That was the starting point for the discussion. And certainly, we, we thought, actually, when we, we, early on in the summer, when we talked to physicians, the chief at the time came forward and said, "Okay, that the, here's what we'd like to implement. Instead of, you know, forty hours of coverage, let's do thirty-four hours of coverage. Instead of twenty-five medical directives, let's do fifteen." We thought we had an agreement. We didn't think we needed an arbitrator or mediator. We went forward on the basis of what the chief told us. Here's what we're prepared to do. It's an interim step and let's do it by September fifteenth before the Douglas conversion happened. And then other things happened. So, we in fact thought we had an agreement.
Okay. Your Worship, I just wanted to address another point that was in the presentation that was made, and it talked about the challenges that you have. And you talked about the fact that patients admitted to the ER, or sorry, patients are not admitted to the ER due to the unavailability of beds. And I guess my first question is, has the NHS closed any beds within the last year?
We've closed thirty beds within the last year, but none at the Niagara Falls site.
Okay. And are there, are there more planned closures over the next year?
If you, if you look at the four-year hospital improvement plan, over the course of that, and that's all, as you know, posted on our website, there are ninety beds to be closed in total. Thirty this year, which we've, we've done, I'm just trying to get the numbers right, sixteen in St. Catherine's and fourteen in Welland. Next year, another thirty, and the following year, another thirty. We have not yet identified which sites those, those beds will be closed at, but that was all part of the hospital improvement plan, directly linked to the fact, if you look at the hospital improvement plan, there are over two hundred patients occupying our acute care beds, that if there were other places for them to be cared for, long-term care, rehab, at home with additional home care support. We don't need all the beds that we have today. So, it was in relation to those investments being made to enhance all of those other services that we will be closing acute care beds.
Okay. So, you don't believe that any further bed closures are going to, I guess, exacerbate the bottleneck problem?
Again, we're planning our, our bed closures in relation to new capacity coming on in the community, and so that's how they're planned. So, the intention is that, no, they would not make the bottleneck worse.
Okay. And Your Worship, my final realm of questioning deals with the issue of money and I know it's the root of all evil. It's been suggested that the doctors' opposition to, I guess, a salary-based scenario is because they would be at a financial loss. Can you tell us what you believe their opposition is for?
I, I, I think you'd have to ask them, it would be inappropriate for me to surmise why they've chosen to leave. I think that, that, that question would be better directed at them.
Well, how about if I ask you, do you believe that that's true?
I would, I can comment in terms of how this model impacts income, because that's what you're focusing on. The current model of the, of the Niagara Falls Emergency Room is that they are remunerated on a fee-for-service basis. And you recall, I explained earlier that there are two models, fee-for-service versus salary, and we don't determine, which they, they determine how they wanna be paid. So, the current model is for forty-five thousand visits, they bill for every patient they see on a fee-for-service basis. And currently, or under the previous model, this income would have been divided up between five to six physicians. In this new model, we're proposing that the same number of visits and income be divided up between fourteen physicians. So, will there be less physician per income under this model? Yes. Is it comparable to physician incomes elsewhere in the province? Yes.
Okay. It leads me to my next question then, which is, is there going to be a financial impact to the NHS under the salary scenario? For instance, if the doctors were receiving the money from Mohip under a fee-for-service model, and now the NHS, I would imagine, is gonna be responsible for the billing. Is there going to be a net difference at all?
Both the salary model and the fee-for-service are both paid directly from the Ministry of Health. They're not paid, they will never be paid by the Niagara Health System. Those arrangements, how physicians are remunerated are directly an agreement between, between them and the Ministry of Health. It doesn't come out of our budget.
So, so there isn't any financial impact for the NHS whatsoever by increasing the level of, or the amount of doctor hour that we have at our ER department?
Not at the end, once we recruit all of our physicians, all of those physicians will be remunerated through the Ministry of Health. The only issue we're facing in the transition is any premiums that we may have to pay, like overtime, to bring in physicians from the outside to feel the shifts. It's a temporary interim transitional cost, but at the end of the day, under this model, as recommended in the report, to move to forty-four to forty-eight hours of coverage, they will be remunerated directly from the Ministry of Health.
So, they'll just get less per physician than the fee-for-service doctors did?
Well, it's very complicated and I, Dr. Damitski is the expert, but typically, when doctors transition from a fee-for-service to an alternate funding or salary arrangement, there typically isn't a difference. In fact, there's a slight premium. In this case, because it's been such a large ER functioning for so long with such a large number of visits, there will be a decrease in the, if the existing physician...
In the average salary?
Yes.
Let me, let me just, because you've asked the question a couple of times and I don't want to be absolutely explicit, that our report and our recommendations do not make any recommendations whatsoever about changing the payment model. It is currently a fee-for-service model. We have not recommended that it change from a fee-for-service model and in, if the hours of service were augmented, it would continue to be a fee-for-service model. So, it is not shifting from fee-for-service to salary or some other recommendation. The group may choose to make that transition, which is their right and they are completely within their rights to do that, but there is no design plan afoot as it pertains to augmenting the hours of coverage in the Niagara Falls general to change the model of payment from fee-for-service.
So, I guess then my question would be, under the new model, would it be all of the services that we're seeing throughout the entire year added up and then it would be divided up?
There, you mean, if, there is no new model. So, that's the first thing I would say, there is no new model. Should the group of physicians choose to change the model, then what they would do is approach the provincial government, alternate payment branch of Emergency Health Services, and say, "These are the number of visits we have per year. This is the relative acuity of all of those patients. Given that statistical basis, what lump sum of funding will you provide to us for physician services?" The ministry would reply back with a number. I'll pick an arbitrary number, ten million dollars. That ten million dollars flows to the group and it's up to the group to decide how they want to distribute it. So, in my work with groups around the province and around the country in this area, some groups, for instance, choose to say, "We would like to have a funded sabbatical plan. We'd like to be able to take six months off every five years. So, what we will do is, we'll decide our hourly rate and we'll take eighty percent of that so that every five years, we can go away for a year and have an income stream." Some groups choose to say, "Now that we're controlling the money, we would actually, you know, we think we should earn more for working the midnight shift than we do for the day shift. So, we're going to change the amount we pay per hour of service by day of the week or by the shift time to incentivize that. We believe as a group that our teaching activity or our research activity is extremely important and we wanna set aside money to incentivize or reward people for teaching medical students or writing a paper, or to give them money to go to national meetings every year for professional development, so we'll set aside money to do that." So, the group has internally total flexibility on that money. It flows through the hospital, but it is not accessible by the hospital.
I understand. Thank you. Counselor? Is that it? Okay. Any other questions by members of council? Counsel Ryanone?
Thank you. Two other questions that we had when we, we met with the board members. Is Dr. Schreig still on the payroll?
That's a personnel matter, I'm not at...
Okay. No, and I understand that. We have committee of the whole, I, I asked your board members, what do you take in committee of the whole, because the first question that we were asked was, "Why don't you attend our NHS Board meetings? They're open to the public." Personally and honestly, I don't wanna hear your public presentation. I really wanna know the in-camera. I, I'm not, I wanna know what's going on and the questions we can't answer, not the public relation poll, let's get along, sing kumbaya. We deal in-camera with personnel, so I don't, I can't even argue you on that. What about Dr. Crowthers? Is he still employed by the, I'm, don't, is he still employed by the NHS?
He, he was never an employee of the NHS.
Okay. Are you still contracting?
No.
Okay, so he's not on any sort of payroll? We're not...
The odds, no, he's not on any, I mean, like, any third-party advice. If we, we've used him to consult throughout the redevelopment of the bylaws periodically. He's, he's paid on an hourly basis whenever the board asks for his advice, but he's not contracted, not paid a retainer.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just, just to piggyback on Counselor Peter Angelo, you, you said you, you have not suggested to the docs to leave the fee-for-service to the, what was your acronym for the?
E D A F A, Emergency Department Alternate Funding Arrangement.
And you, and, and you, and I don't want you to leave here with me thinking you've misled us or having any questions in our head, because I was just handed a two thousand and eight board meeting agenda, Emergency Department Strategy, February two thousand and eight, where board action required and background, and the last paragraph in this is, "To that end, we have moved our three southern tier sites into an E D A F A arrangement and are now beginning a process to reconfigure our northern tier sites." Now, I wanna make sure I understand this. You just said you didn't do that.
Right.
And, and this is saying, this is what...
Those physicians, what you've heard earlier, those physicians, and, is Dr. Litterman still here? Dr. Litterman can speak, attest to this. Those three sites chose, those physicians chose to move to an E D A F A.
Did you recommend it to them or did they come to you and say, "We wanna move to an E D F A"?
They did it on their own.
They freely accepted.
Freely accepted it. We, we can't force them to, to move into it.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just wanted to understand what I was reading. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay. Counsel Ryanone?
Just one more. Do, do you have any concern about the, the transportation issue with the movement of the different disciplines? And do you take any responsibility for the opportunity for people to get around the region to attend appointments or hospitals or whatever?
Is that, are you, is that a question in relation to the, the service configuration with the, the hospital improvement plan or with respect to emergency services or...
Yes. The whole issue of healthcare and transportation. Somebody has to go to Welland. How do they get there? A senior who maybe is elderly and doesn't drive? You know, what are we gonna do about this situation?
Are we, if the question is, are we subsidizing any transportation out of our budget today to transfer patients? The, what, what we do pay for is inter-facility transportation through the outpatient transfer service. We do, we're, so when ambulance can't transfer, we pay for a patient to be transferred. But in terms of a transportation, a transportation system for patients to get to appointments or to regional service, we're not subsidizing or, nor have we created a transportation system for that. That is really a regional initiative.
Huge, huge problem.
And we, we are at the table with the region of Niagara in terms of what's our piece of the puzzle, but there's, as you know, that's a longstanding, long conversation that we wanna be part of the solution, but we can't pay for transportation out of our budget.
Mrs. Sevenpiper, you may confirm that on July fifteenth, I would, I expressed that very concerned to you as when you indicated to me the changes that propose in the, in the HIP, so I think it was one of the key points that I was having difficulty with, suggesting that would be a, a very big stumbling block, so concern I had then. Yes. Counsel Ryanone?
Thank you. And my question is not too, I, I have no further questions for them, but this question is to you. That was also a question raised at our committee and, and through a number of questions. They wanted to know, what's the regional initiative going to be to cover the transportation costs from site to site? And are we looking at a new regional tax or municipal tax to subsidize the building of the new hospital?
Well, in what regard?
One of the questions...
In transportation?
One of the, one of the comments emailed, and it wasn't even a question, it was, "I have heard that your municipal council is going to implement a tax levy specifically to, municipal tax levy to specifically fund the new hospital." And my response was, "That's news to us. We've never heard that." So...
I haven't heard that.
You haven't heard that either? And as the NHS Board, do you plan on coming forward to us and asking, okay...
I will, let me clarify.
Okay.
When we're, when we're in the position of undertaking massive redevelopment of the Niagara Falls site, which we're in the process of working on a master plan to do that, to see it completely rebuilt over time, we will be coming to you at that point for, but not for the new...
And perhaps we should acknowledge the fact that Niagara Lake, St. Catherine's, and Thorold will be paying for their portion of the regional, of, of their hospital, I should say.
They, St. Catherine's, Thorold, and Niagara Lake are paying a municipal levy because that's their primary community hospital.
That's right.
And then there's a regional levy for regional services that will be offered at that new healthcare complex.
And I think that's the point that maybe Counsel Ryanone may have gotten confused on, if that's your...
No, no, I'm not confused. I'm just telling you the email that we got. This is what we've heard. We, pardon me? Okay. And then, and then, and to piggyback on that, is there going to be a regional tax levy implemented through a regional portion of taxes that the residents of Niagara Falls are going to have to pay, that regional council's gonna vote on to fund that new hospital? Because, yes, well, and I'm asking the mayor, because through, if you remember at Fourth Circle, actually, Dr. Nicholson specifically asked you two questions. Would you support that tax increase being put on the backs of the residents of Niagara Falls? And, and he, actually, he asked you two times, both times your answer was no. So, I would assume you'd come back to this council and say, "Okay, we're being, and I'm just asking, we're being asked at the region to vote for a regional tax that all municipalities will pay for to fund the new hospital." Has that come before the region?
No.
Okay. Is it slated to come, and will you let us know when it does?
Certainly. I, I would think that I would come to this council and ask for their comment, but we haven't, other than the fact that Niagara Lake, St. Catherine's, and Thorold will be paying for... other than the fact that Niagara Lake, St. Catherine's, and Thorold will be paying for their community hospital, the regional funding will be coming as we're raising money now through the foundations and maybe Mrs. Sevenpiper, you might want to discuss the regional mass aspect of that.
No, and I'd like to thank, just one thing.
Excuse me?
I'd like to thank you because that was rumors that you just cleared up, which I really think confuses me.
That's fine, but I'll ask a question. Mrs. Sevenpiper, have you had any discussion with the, either the chair of the region or anybody else on staff with regard to the regional aspect of the?
Well, I have to say, I'm not sure I'm following the question because there have been approvals for both a regional levy and three municipal levies. There's $60 million worth of levies in total that were approved years, years ago, quite frankly, in terms of supporting the new healthcare complex. So there was, I believe, $21 million approved regionally and the remainder, $39 million was approved between St. Catherine's, Thorold, and Niagara Lake. That's already been approved and voted on at regional council.
At regional council.
Yes.
And we're paying our share through the foundation as well of a portion of that regional hospital, is that correct? The foundation was raising...
It's through, it's through a regional tax levy.
Yes.
So the residents of Niagara Falls are paying a portion in their regional taxes?
For regional services, for the new healthcare complex, for cardiac catheterization and for tertiary mental health. Those three regional services that will benefit all Niagara residents. Yes, was a regional tax levy?
The regional portion of that hospital.
That is correct.
That's right.
Just the regional, you're not, that's not covering the community hospital cost. That was only for the new regional services.
Okay. And that goes back to what Counselor Thompson said in his conversation to you. Call a spade a spade. It's a regional hospital. And our doctors are telling us, but I will say, this is my final comment here. You talk about the hundreds of millions that will go in to rebuild GNGH. I don't have a problem with you coming to us for services, but the consensus, the petition signing, the residents wants, and that's what we deal with here, and they believe that the residents of Niagara Falls deserve, and I believe it, and so does this council, a full-service hospital. That'll be the fight you get from us. Not your merge, but what the residents are asking for. We deserve a full-service hospital. And I hope that should be...
Thank you. Again, thank you. All right, please. Please, thank you. Again, Mrs. Sevenpiper, thank you very much. And also to Mrs. Gladhill, thank you, to the doctors, to the staff, all those who've been involved, the board members who've been coming this evening. We appreciate the dialogue and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please? Okay. Call the council to order, please. Mr. Clerk?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at 3401 and 3421 Wyandotte Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act, but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on Monday, October 5th, 2009. Anyone who wants notice of council's decisions shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. This time we're going to ask Mr. Bollebrich to explain the purpose of this application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just briefly go through the approval request of council. Just going through a location map, if I can, which is not working very well. Okay, here we have the location on Wyandotte, front and onto Wyandotte.
Could we close the door, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This property fronts on Wyandotte, east of Willoughby Drive. The land uses surrounding the property are primarily vacant to the north and east. We've got FJ Rutland to the south and some multiple family to the west. The applicant's proposing the conversion of the two apartment buildings to condominium. There are 35 units in each of the two buildings. This will allow individual ownership of the units and would provide some affordable housing. I've got a, next slide is the, basically the site plan. You see the two buildings there, the green outlining the green space and the parking area at the rear. The next slide gives you an idea as to, one of the requests of draft plan approval will be the amalgamating the garbage disposal units into a covered, covered operation. Just very briefly then, going over the requirements, as said by the clerk, there's no public meeting, all the tenants, telephone calls from any of the residents, and that was sent out October 5th. Regarding the vacancy rate, the official plan discourages condominium conversions below 3% and the region has a similar policy. We have quite a healthy vacancy rate of 5.2% in the overall city. And the conversion would then, with the city policy. So then, basically, the recommendation is that we approve the condominium subject to the conditions of draft plan condominium.
Thank you very much. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed draft plan of condominium. The applicant who wish, please come forward, sir, if you could just give us...
01, Wyandotte, apartment 512. I apologize to the council, I couldn't get back to you. I've been very sick. I just got back from Toronto from having an antiogram and they found a blockage. So I do apologize for not getting back to you. Mr. Mayor and council, I just moved here from Toronto. I was a policeman in Toronto. And I'm the mayor of the parades. And I, that live at 01 or 24, 3421. We're all on fixed income pensions. If I wanted to buy a condo, I would have stayed in Toronto. It's very quiet there. The people enjoy each other and I don't feel like moving and I've only lived there a month. So once again, I'd like to apologize to the councilor and to this council I couldn't get back. But I just wish we stay there as tenants because we can pay our rent that way. We can afford condominiums. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. McKenzie, do you have a lease?
Yes, I do.
And how long is it for?
One year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Mr. McKenzie? Yes, Mr. Bollebrich?
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to the comment. Under the Provincial Residential Tenancy Acts, Act, you will not be, you cannot be evicted. You can rent and stay in your apartment for as long as you're willing to. There is no increase in rent as a result of the condominium conversion. So there will be no effect, net effect, on individuals such as the gentleman here tonight.
Well, I didn't know that. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKenzie. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Once again, yes, please come forward, sir. Could you have your name and address, please?
George Bodmer, 506, apartment 506 and 3401. I just wanted to ask, how does the, this work with regard to the condominiums? People that are wanting a condominium, maybe, I don't know if this gentleman can tell us, a person comes in and wants to buy a condominium. What's the procedure in showing the apartments or how does that work? I, I'm unaware of that. Would they come in to, how do they decide?
Mr. Bollebrich, can you address that?
I can try to answer that, certainly. I presume they will be having an office set up where people that are interested in doing that could, could inspect the unit. It'll be manned by a salesperson and there would be some vacancies, I presume. They would convert those to the condominiums, improve them. So likely it will be available onsite through some mechanism that you could find out about.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, whether these individuals that come in, they're wanting to look at some units.
Correct.
They won't even know what unit to go to. We've been there 13 years ourselves and we're on a fixed income as well. But I just didn't know how this procedure works, whether we'll be there until when?
Yeah. The draft plan of condominium will be for a three-year period, during which that period, the owner has to comply with certain requirements, okay? Sometimes he's not able to meet all the requirements within the three-year period, so therefore he has to request an extension. You know, I would tend to think there'd have to be a vacancy within one of the units and he'd have to fix that up and he would utilize that unit as a sales office. So, but to, if you wish to buy a unit, you could do that through that process, but if you're perfectly happy with the rental accommodation, we don't see any real net effect of your livability in that location.
It would only be if we left, is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought they'd be coming in to different apartments while we're there or something to see whether they wanted our apartment.
I would tend to think it's only going to be the vacant ones. So rest assured, you should be fine and should be no impact on yourself, as long as you're willing to live there.
Thank you.
Does that help? Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone other than the applicant, again, who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone else? Once again, anyone else would like to speak to this matter? Okay, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant or his representative. Please come forward, your name, please.
Good evening, members, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jennifer Ritchie, solicitor for the applicant Wyandotte Place. To address some of the concerns of the tenants here this evening, I'd just like to reassure them that under section 51 of the Residential Tenancies Act, there is no concern, a purchaser, the landlord and/or purchaser of the unit has no ability to evict an existing tenant or a tenant actually, who is a tenant at the time the declaration is registered, for the purposes of utilizing the unit for their own personal use. So as Mr. Bollebrich did indicate, you can stay in the unit for, as a tenant, so long as you comply with all the other rules and regulations of the premises and with the Residential Tenancies Act, and so long as you pay your rent. So, now with regards to sales of the unit, there's no anticipation at this particular point in time to engage in the sale of any units. However, in the event where any of the units would be sold, I would expect that they would be done upon vacancies of the unit and any renovations to be completed would be done at that time after the units are vacant. With respect to, I had some just requests for slight specifications or amendments to the draft plan conditions, if possible. The only slight amendment, if possible, would be with regards to condition number four. It indicates that the developers submit a site servicing plan for review and approval of municipal works. It's my understanding from speaking, from our, the applicant's architect, speaking to Mr. Volpinis Department that, and with Mr. Wilson of the Planning Department, that though that site servicing plan is, only relates to weeping tile flows and downspout outlets as set out in the actual assessment, page three. That's the only slight draft plan condition amendment that I'm requesting. Other than that, if council has any questions with regards to...
Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I hope you'll all find in your package, the last time we questioned condominium conversions and why we were seeing all of this rash of them, somebody sent me a copy of an explanation. And of course, the inexpensive interest rates are one of the reasons that they suggest, they also suggest that there is a tax advantage to people who do convert and some people, as they did a few weeks ago, can convert for estate purposes. So there are logical reasons for this. But one area that it stresses here is the fact that it's an opportunity for inexpensive housing for people on fixed or low incomes. Get the opportunity rather than paying rent. They can acquire a property and pay towards some equity in their property. So I thought that would be interesting for members of council and it was for me to find out the mystery why all of this was coming and it's cyclical. It comes and goes as the interest rates rise and fall and where it becomes, the building costs apparently are a detriment to new rental housing at this particular time. So I would formally move the conversion be approved as requested.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any comments? Counselor Wing?
I got something different out of reading that same, actually, it's the Canadian Apartment Journal for September, October 2007. And what really jumped out at me was under the section titled, "What are the key benefits of condo conversions?" Condominium conversions can result in significant tax benefits for a property owner because they allow a property owner to take advantage of the lower realty taxes for single property units as compared, as compared to multifamily units. For example, a multifamily property... For example, a multifamily property in Ontario can have taxes of up to 3.8 times the amount that would be paid on the same building if it were composed of a series of single-family condominium units rather than a single multifamily unit property. So, what it comes down to is, you can do the conversion, not sell a single unit, but 3.8 times more taxes than before you did the conversion. What that impacts on is us and our revenue streams. And as a matter of principle, as I've indicated in the past, I'm going to vote against all condominium conversion applications, because this is eroding our municipal tax revenue stream. We're going to be scrambling to come up with money to make up that six billion shortfall. We'll keep doing this, and it's going to be all that tougher.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One. Thank you very much. Thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clerk, I should say. Go ahead, please. Good. Calling everybody here. Yes, sir. I'm reading, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. That's right. Sorry. Motion.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit property at 7565 Lundys Lane to be used for tourist commercial and office purposes, the former Parks and Recreation Building, amongst other things. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, September 18th, 2009, and by posting a property, posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in a site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Once again, I'm going to ask Mr. Bolivar to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Bolivar?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll quickly go through a few slides here. We can see the location of the property on Corner Montrose and Lundys Lane. Nature of the uses in the area are predominantly tourist commercial. If you move to the next slide, Dean, just quickly going through some of the points. A lot of us know about the history of this building. It initially was a school. There's been a police substation in its use in the past, as well as a jail. It has been used by city services, including engineering and planning offices, and finally the Parks, Recreation and Culture Office. Portion of the building has been used by the Niagara Studies Arts Association. With the selling of the property, we're proposing the change in zoning from open space, which reflects its historic use, to tourist commercial with the added use of offices, which it historically been used as such for a number of years. On April 6th, council directed that the property be appraised, which has been undertaken, and be put on the open market with a reserved bid, along with the notice that in the future it could be considered as a designated, as a heritage property. If the council so wishes, there is obviously a process for that such designation. Just the air photograph showing the line, the red line to the north reflects the current fence, wrought iron fence that's been constructed there. Under the planning analysis, the official plan designates the property as tourist commercial, as is much of the property along Lundys Lane. We're suggesting that the tourist commercial zone, which is being requested, add the office use. And under the zoning, as I said, it's currently zoned open space. The zoning will, the change will reflect its past use, as well as its, hopefully, the future use, and we think the office use could easily be accommodated. If there's another use, such as a proposal for a restaurant or something like that, they would have to comply with the parking requirements and probably could not accommodate that on the site. So, I think office use will likely be the long-term use. Parks and Recreation requested that there be a five-foot buffer along the property line, both to the north and to the east, and they are in the midst of preparing that, doing that work as we, as we speak. So, in conclusion, Mayor and members of council, we think the zoning will conform to the official plan, reflects future use that is compatible with the area, and we recommend approval. I would like to bring to your attention a letter from the Niagara region we received, I think, yesterday, addressed to Andrew Bryce. They are requesting a, that there not be approval of the zoning at this time, and suggested a traffic study. I guess we're a little disappointed with the, the timing of the letter. We know, historically, the corner has been one of concern from a traffic perspective. There is a regional sign warning on the, I think, the light pole of caution as you turn right to go past the entrance. And I really don't know what to recommend as far as that, other than, than we can work with the region to try to resolve that, and historically it has been used as an office. So, we'll let that speak for itself, I guess.
Okay, thank you very much. And, once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will (noise) dismiss any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please come forward. And for the record, please state your name and address.
See, Alex Pinger, 6440 Montrose Road.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, you worship, member of the council. It's, see, we are back again with regarding to change of the bylaw on the building on the corner of Montrose Road and Lundys Lane. I think I remember that, I'm out of breath, excuse me. On April the 6th, it was a meeting we had downstairs. You have that on the front of you, on second page? Which it stated that it would have gone for an appraisal, and to be considered, the building to be designated for heritage? Now, by you passing the bylaw tonight, will this apply to the same thing? Will this apply? If anybody will buy the building, would, would keep the building for heritage? Designate it as heritage?
Yeah, Mr. Bolivar, could you address that, please?
Sure. That'll be decision of, of this council. If they so wish to have it designated as a heritage building, they would have to pass a motion of a notice of intent to designate it as heritage. So, it'd be a decision the council will make.
So, Mr. Pinger, are you asking if and when, or, or if it's going to be planned at all?
Well, back in April the 6th, it was a motion that you were going to go for an appraisal for the building, had put out for tender. There was nothing to say about changing the bylaw. That's right here on the minute. Now, I get notice that we are changing the bylaw to tourist commercial. And if you read it through the report, to have an office there, it's illegal, fine.
Well, I think the purpose of changing the zoning is to allow future use to be accommodating an office or a, a commercial venture in respect of that. But, Mr. Bolivar, you might want to qualify that again, please, for us.
Okay, yes. The current zoning does not permit an office use. As was talked about a little while ago, it reflected the Parks, Recreation and Culture Office. That's why open space was a permitted, the office use of the Parks and Recreation was a permitted use. Now, when council has decided to sell the property, it has to reflect the private use. And the tourist commercial is the most appropriate use, because it will conform with the official plan, which provides the guide. And we've added, recommended the addition of offices as a permitted use. Typically, under tourist commercial, office is not a permitted use on a standalone basis. It's generally associated with a commercial use. So, you're talking about, the appraisal was, was a condition of council's approval. The land appraisal is, I think, what you're referring to, and that land appraisal was, was undertaken, and the solicitor has that appraisal available. And if council so wishes, they would utilize that in their going forward to selling the property.
Yes, but by selling this property, you change it to tourist commercial, that's fine, I have no problem, I believe what you're saying. But whoever purchased this property could have respected the exterior of that building, which according with April 6th, the meeting, that's what you passed.
Yeah, and Counselor...
April the 6th meeting says, it didn't say nothing about the change in the bylaw. It said you were going to get an appraisal, a go-out for tender, and everyone would have the chance to buy. It would be designated, this building right here, cultural heritage value.
Yes, it says this recommendation is based on the municipal heritage committee's motion that they be involved in future discussions involving the building, and consideration be given to designating the building and property as a, again, as a statement of cultural heritage value. Perhaps Counselor Wing could speak to that, Mr. Pinguay?
Well, actually, if I look at page two of the report before, it notes that on April 6th, one of the things that council directed was that when the property be put on the, on the market, it'd be with notice of the future intent to designate the property under the Ontario Heritage Act. And of course, since then, we've received this letter from the region to which Mr. Bolivar was referring, and on page three, they, under their conclusions, it says, "The regional staff recommends a heritage impact assessment be undertaken to determine the cultural heritage value of the property, and, if appropriate, the property be designated prior to the city's sale of the property." That heritage impact assessment was done long ago. The outcome was that, yes, the property is of significant cultural heritage value and should be designated. And the region is saying that if that is the case, which it is, the property should be designated prior to the sale. So, perhaps what we should do is move the recommendations before, is adding a third one that council hereby give notice of intention to designate the building under the Ontario Heritage Act. And so, that will address Mr. Pinguay's concerns, it will address the region's concerns, it will address the municipal heritage committee's concerns. This is something the council has in the past, said, yes, we do intend to do, so let's just get that ball rolling as well, and get this whole thing underway. So, that will be my motion.
Okay. I, I believe that, we can, we'll conclude the meeting, we'll get that from you. I believe that, Mr. Pinguay, just to answer your question as well, Counselor Wing's tried to qualify that, the recommendation was to have the busy, the building designated, save and accept the addition, which was the garage, which they don't feel is significant.
No, the garage comes up.
And, and certainly the appraisal would reflect the zoning of the property, and also the heritage designation. So, to be fair to anybody buying the property, they would buy it as a, as a building designated heritage if it's so approved by this council, and also, they would buy it for tourist commercial uses, which is a use, I think, that you wanted to see permitted.
That's fine, whatever you put it, the only thing I want, the building to be saved, the exterior of the building.
Yes, yes, and I think that'll come forward this evening. Okay.
This is what the reason I have tonight, yes.
Sure. Okay. Is there anything else that you have to address?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Obviously, there's nobody else in the chamber with respect to the comments from the public. Are there any other concern by members of council? Having seen none, then the, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Counselor Wing?
I'll move the recommendations with the addition of the third, that council give notice of intention to designate the building of cultural heritage interest under the Ontario Heritage Act.
And possibly that the appraisal would reflect the same?
Sure.
Okay, if you would? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Iannone. Any discussion further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, I want to give my comments this evening by congratulating, excuse me. Counselor Iannone, seconded by her. I want to congratulate Mr. Jeff Holman, the director of Municipal Works, and Sue Wheeler at the, and the staff at the Service Centre, who recently hosted a friendly departmental competition, supported Project Share, and topped off their efforts with a barbecue lunch break. The Service Centre staff gathered over, just over 1,300 pounds of food, with the winning department being the garage staff. Additionally, they raised $300 in cash through their barbecue and received a donation of 400 from their union to add to their efforts. We wish to most sincerely thank everyone for recognizing Project Share's needs for their clients and for the care and generosity demonstrated by all of our Service Centre staff. I would also like to thank and congratulate the director of Parks, Recreation, Culture, Denise Morrissey, and Mark Richardson of our Parks, Recreation and Culture Department, and all members of the Park and City Committee, in particular Chairman Pat Muscaran, for the outstanding efforts they put forward for the city's first foray into the provincial communities in bloom competition. As you heard earlier this evening, the city of Niagara Falls was recognized with Five Blooms, the highest rating available. It was very pleased, I was very pleased to have been involved in several of the judges' events while they were here in Niagara Falls, and know firsthand how very impressed they were with our community. Special thanks should also be extended to our key partners, all the BIAs, and so many of our businesses, organizations, and residents, whose combined efforts have showcased Niagara Falls as a leader in the environmental efforts as well, and beautification and civic pride of our city. Thank you to all. You may recall earlier this year that the British Canadian Veterans Association of Niagara Falls received $25,000 in federal government monies to help local seniors enter the computer and internet's age. Beginning October 24th through November 28th, they will be holding training sessions for approximately 80 seniors. The organizers are currently looking towards, are looking for volunteers, whether they be teens to seniors, to assist with these training sessions. If you, or anyone you know, would be interested in assisting with this pilot project, please call Barb Burrows at 905-356-1721, or you may contact the mayor's office for further information. To help the city with its 2010 budget process, we have hosted two public information sessions where we're able to gather information from residents regarding the city's service levels and priorities, as well as receiving suggestions on how to address the budget deficit. Two additional means of public participation in this process is through the citizen survey on our website at www.nagarefals.ca, and through our random telephone survey currently being conducted by city staff. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone of the United Way's annual Poor Boy Luncheon being held this Thursday, October 21st, at the Optus Hall beginning at 11:30. And the 10th anniversary of the Estee Lauder Pink Illumination Event is being held on Friday, October 23rd, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Table Rock, Table Rock House Grand Hall. This is a free event where there will be a silent auction, Canadian entertainment, pink illumination of the falls, and pink fireworks. This is Estee Lauder's annual breast cancer awareness campaign, with all proceeds going to the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. As well, this evening, you received in your packages a notice from the Rotary Club of Niagara Falls, in conjunction with the Youth Interact Club, will be hosting an event to increase awareness of World Polio Day. The flagship project of Rotary International is to eradicate polio. The Interact students at A&amp;Meyer Secondary School are planning a pink, a purple pinky day, where purple pinkies are symbolic in developing the countries where national polio immunization occurs. Children have their small finger dyed purple to indicate that they have received the immunization. So, on Friday, we're welcoming everyone to, on Friday, October 23rd, between 11:15, 11:45 to A&amp;Meyer Secondary School. The students are requesting pennies for polio. For a small donation, you can have your pinky purple, and the students would be greatly appreciating your support to increase awareness in eliminating polio. This concludes my comments for this evening. Move on to the next item in Communications. The first item on the agenda is the Regional Municipality of Niagara requesting comments regarding the bridge dedication for fallen police officers with the consideration of council. Yes, Counselor Iannone?
I'll move our support for the dedication of the bridge.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Second item is the Celebrate Old Downtown Request for a letter of support for Celebrate Old Downtown and Springlicious. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have Fax Niagara, request that the month of October be proclaimed as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Number four, international, ep- ep- epitomolisis? Let's get into this, Mr. Clerk. Epitomolisis, melosa? Is that fair? Want to try that one?
Epitomolisis.
Epitomolisis.
We practice this all Friday in the conference.
International Epitomolisis, this week, the week of October 25th to 31st be proclaimed as, as the International EB Week. So, we have moved by EB. Moved by Counselor Idi Adi, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Once again, any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Too late. Number five, the OFL FTO requests that November 6th, 2009 be proclaimed as Community Social Services Workers Appreciation Aid in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, any comments from council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Number six, Niagara Falls Optus requests the week of November 5th... Number six, Niagara Falls Optus requests the week, November 15th to 21st, 2009, be proclaimed as Youth Appreciation Week in the City of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, any comments from council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you. Number seven, Crohn's and Colitis Foundation of Canada requests that November 2009 be proclaimed as Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month in the City of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any comment from members of council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Additional item for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk?
Excuse me, your worship. There isn't a communication per se, but in your additions, there's a resolution authorizing staff to fill out the appropriate application. There's now available some provincial funding for the upcoming torch rod. We already received 15,000 from the feds, and now the province is offering matching funds, so this authorizes the appropriate staff person to fill out that application.
Requested a resolution moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, any comments from council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you very much. Move on to reports. Call on Counsel Iannoni as Chair of the Ratification and for Ratification and Community Services Committee Action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is a long one. And one that the minutes of the September 28th, 2009, meeting be adopted as recorded. Under two deputation, that Montrose at Niagara, one, that staff be directed to initiate an urban boundary expansion on behalf of the city to include the Montrose lands, and that the region be requested to take such steps as are necessary to ensure that the region's adopted official plan policies regarding urban area boundary expansions are not reversed by the province. Three, under reports, CSC 2009-01 Lundys Lane Historical Museum Expansion Progress Report, the Board of Museums is requesting consideration from city council on the following. One, approval of the new design direction for the Lundys Lane Historical Museum, and that approval be, to rebrand the facility from Lundys Lane Historical Museum to Niagara Falls Historical Museum. PD 2009-79, matters arising from the Municipal Heritage Committee, that council approve the proposed alterations to follow the designated heritage properties. A, Spencer Weaver House, 6590 Dunn Street, to reestablish a veranda along the north side of the house, and the former Post Office Customs House, 4177 Park Street, to install new plywood and a water ice shield covering the roof of the building with the condition that the owner supply confirmation from the manufacturer of the water ice shield that the material will last without further roofing material for 20 to 30 years, and that council receive information, the municipal heritage, heritage committee's recommendation regarding the most recent plans for the Lundys Lane museum expansion. MW 2009-76, request for infrastructure improvements Vine Street, Cynex Avenue to west of Coholan Street, that the request from local residents to include infrastructure improvements and the reconstruction of Vine Street be referred to staff for inclusion in the 10-year infrastructure needs assessment. MW 2009-55, that regional Niagara waste collection revision to base level and enhanced level of service, that council support the proposed changes to the region's base level of service and the city's enhanced level of service for the upcoming regional waste request, regional waste collection request for proposal. Under MW 2009-79, site preparation costs to Gale Complex, that this report be received and filed. P, under PRC 2009-30, Kayla Road Sports Park Washroom Building, that the proposed washroom building at the Kayla Road Sports Park be expanded to include a community clubhouse at a maximum cost to the city of $550,000. Under PD 2009-75, CB and FIG 2009-004, RBL 2009-001, 5936 to 5942 Main Street, former Mandarin Shoe Building, that the commercial building and facade improvement grant application, residential loan application for 5936 to 5942 Main Street be approved, subject to the owner satisfying the program requirements, including satisfaction on the Ontario Building Code and the Ontario Fire Code with the execution of the necessary agreements with the city. Under TS 2009-42, Kayla Road Parking Control Review, that a no parking zone be established on the west side of Kayla Road between a .40 meters north of McGary Drive and a .230 meters north of McGary Drive. That a no standing zone be established on the west side of Kayla Road between McGary Drive and a .40 meters north of McGary Drive. That a no stopping zone be established on the west side of Kayla Road between McGary Drive and a .40 meter south of McGary Drive. And that a no point, a no parking zone be established on the west side of Kayla Road between a 40 meter south of McGary Drive and a .200 meters south of McGary Drive. It sounds like I'm repeating myself here. That the bike lane west side of Kayla Road be extended to McLeod Road, and that the regulatory signs and markings be applied, and that a no heavy vehicles restriction, including no buses, condition be established on Kayla Road between Lundys Lane and McLeod Road. Under MW 2009-61, City of Niagara Falls Engineering Design Standards Manual, that council adopt the Engineering Design Standards Manual. And under new business, that a three-way stop be installed at the Bellevue and Valleyway intersection in ISO move.
Seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Like to call on Corporate Services Committee Actions, call on Counsel Peter, Peter Angelo's Chair, please.
Your worship, following items that would be ratified from tonight's meeting. First, that the minutes of the September 28th meeting be adopted as recorded. Under reports, CD 2013, dealing with customer services standard policy, it's recommended that council adopt the policy in compliance with the Accessibility for Ontario, for Ontarians with Disabilities Act of 2005. And the last report, your worship, was FS 2009-08, dealing with the master fire plan, and it was recommended that council approve the expenditure fund in the amount of $50,000 to secure the services of Ernest Y., as the preferred proponent for the Niagara Falls Fire Services Master Fire Plan, and also that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the contract, and I would so move the minutes.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Iannoni. Once again, any comments from the council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, we have received some correspondence this evening, and staff would like to pull item number L 2009-31, Sanevich Realty Limited and the City Encroachment Agreement on Murray Street retaining wall and sidewalk. So moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo, that we eliminate that and defer that until we have better input from solicitors. Right? All those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you. Now, on the consent agenda.
Move the rest of it.
Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Iannoni. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you. Okay, are there any, is there anyone here with respect to a, we have a bylaw with regard to the name change of Bellevue Terrace to the name of Redmond Heights, item number 2009-159. We have no one in council with respect to this name change. I presume there's no objection? So proceed on.
I don't think so.
Moved by Counsel Wain, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Again, any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you.
I'll take all the bylaws.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws with respect to the bylaws listed for council's consideration this evening?
No, your worship.
And can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws be given a first reading? Moved by Counsel Diadati, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2009-159 to 2009-169, read a first time.
Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motions carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2009-159 to 2009-169, read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? Counsel Wain.
Just regarding the legislation that's about to come into effect regarding the use of cell phones in vehicles, I received an email several weeks ago from a citizen suggesting that we should be canceling all our cellphone contracts, because, you know, I seen it myself, city employees driving around talking on a cellphone. If they were to be charged by police, who would be responsible? Would it be the employee driving, talking on the cellphone, or would it be the city?
Okay. Our CIO?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, our staff have been advised and will continue to be advised that they have to comply with all provincial policies. So if they were charged by police, that would be their, their own offense. It would be a violation of provincial act, and that would be something that we would be dealing with them. We would not be responsible for that action. Having said that, you know, we're going to encourage that all employees follow. Employees that have their own personal phones, you know, we would encourage that they not be using those phones during working hours. As you know, we do have a number of employees that have their own phones for work, and we would encourage that they would only use those while a vehicle was parked, or definitely not operating any equipment. My understanding is that the, when the law comes in effect in October, that there's